The other one was punched in pretty good.
It aren't too far north, like Freeman and a little bit further north is by every farm site. And the vehicle actually, the machines have torn out.
And we went down, ran off the brask here. Right after that storm, there was a guy had this, I pulled it fifty, seventy thousand worship bins. One of them was just flat on the ground, the other one was all sucked in. Here's one sitting beside it, probably a twenty thousand worship bin, never touched it, right in between them. Probably was. Two on the side were just.
I got nine o'clock and go call the meeting to order, start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Local.
Mottler.
Here.
Packard.
She doesn't have her.
There we go.
There she goes. Smith. Here, Manning.
Here.
Hammond.
Here. Any conflict of interest declarations? Hearing none, approve agenda.
I'd like to add something to the agenda if I might, if you're quick one. And that is to discuss a resolution in support of the regional jails that the state legislature is looking at and our local senator thinks that it would.
Okay, yeah, so our, our, so this would be a resolution to the legislature in support of the regional jail concept. And the suggestion was made by our state senator that we pass that resolution and then request that Turner County pass it to. And he thinks that that would be a powerful signal to the committee that this is a viable, a viable way to go. So I'd just like to discuss how we might put that together and, and make it happen.
Have a motion with an amendment.
I'll say it.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Or sorry, we got a roll call, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
We got confused. Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes, approve minutes.
I move approval. Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Are there any visitors to be heard that aren't on the agenda? Hearing none, Lauren?
Okay, I just have my quarterly report for you guys today, I think you all have a copy of it emailed to you. Raven should be back from maternity leave next week, so in that meantime, I've just been busy in the office. Getting stuff ready for summer. We've started some of our summer contests and activities, we had public presentations last month, or May first. We had four participants this year and one of them was a cloverbud, he's just five and it was really good. Then as far as programming stuff goes, I did safety day in April with the Vermillion kindergarten in first grade, so it was like hundred and ninety-six kids on the fairgrounds, I think, for the afternoon. They went to stations like stranger danger, the police department came, or sheriff came to do that one, that one was good. Water safety with life jackets, campfire safety, dogs, and what was the last one? Bicycle helmets, yep. And then I also went down and did egg day with the Vermillion first grade, they put that on down, this year it was at the Sorenson Farm and they, we talked about crops this year. Other than that, we've got deadlines coming up tomorrow for animals being entered into our 4H online system, so that that will be really the sort of our busy season. Yep, that's all I think I've got. Just any questions?
Good pictures again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get a name of photography.
Yes. Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, thank you.
Matt?
Here. Very light. So it's about this time that I come and I talk to you guys about the ambulance replacement that's due January of twenty twenty-three. So we've started the process of looking into replacement ambulances for the one that we're set to retire. Currently, obviously, we didn't think, we know that there's a chassis problem, get of it, obtaining chassis. We didn't realize it's as bad as what it is even in the commercial market. Currently, most manufacturers we talked to have zero chassis sitting on their lot, they're waiting for chassis currently. What we're being told currently is for, to do a remount with the current box we still have, it could be eighteen to twenty-four months to obtain a chassis. Twenty months on a new ambulance, apparently manufacturer, new manufacturers are getting ambulances faster, a little faster, unable to complete them and get them out the door. As of January first, talking with Kerry, there's about a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars available to replace the ambulance. We have been started, we started looking around at some of the vendors that are in the area and to see if anybody had any demo units that they have currently. Most, most don't have any demos to even bring out and show. We have found one or two vendors that have some demos coming off the factory line late October, early November. And they are for sale as well. One of the two for sure, we know would like to, what they do is they work it into the buying contract to keep it for two to three months to use as a show and then they sell it. Right now, and we know that the prices in, price increases have been terrible. In the last eighteen months, ambulances have gone up approximately fifteen percent on top of the, you know, three to five percent every year before that. And so what we're looking at, if we do a remount, and so we'd be waiting anywhere from eighteen to twenty-four months potentially. We're looking at probably, now this is staying with a four-wheel drive chassis pickup truck, we're looking at about two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Demo units, the two demo units that we know that this one company has coming off the line late October, early November are two, between two thirty-five and two fifty, depending if you modify options that are on them. The ambulance that needs to be replaced, I don't have a lot of faith that it will make it eighteen to twenty-four months. It's got a hundred and eighty thousand miles on it. It is having electrical issues that we've been able to repair so far, but parts are scarce because it's a two thousand and three. So the boards and stuff are twenty years old, and so there, it's harder to get, plus the manufacturer that built it is no longer in business. So most everything you're getting is either from a different company or their repaired circuit boards and stuff like that for electricity or for the electrical system. So basically, coming to you guys to let you know where we're at, kind of what our options are at this point. But like I said, we do know the price has increased and went up dramatically. What prices will do in the next eighteen to twenty-four months? No vendor will guarantee us what prices will be. I can tell you from recently in January, the city purchased a new fire truck placed on order for a new rescue engine. That truck ended up being a hundred thousand dollars more than what it was the year before, twelve months prior, and we cut stuff off of it. If we would have waited six, just six months till now, speaking with the vendor, the price would have went up another eighteen percent. So prices are only going to go up and they're only going to get worse. So I wanted to bring it to you, the commission for discussion on direction that you'd like to see us take, whether it's to, you know, look to order a chassis and wait it out and see, and whether that be a four-wheel drive chassis pickup truck or the E-series for the Fords, which are two-wheel drive. You know, when we can put chains on the, or automatic chains on the truck to give traction in the winter time. And so those are kind of our options, and I'll let you guys ask questions to me because it's probably easier than me standing up here trying to give you as much information as I can think of.
What's the, the value of you think of it, of the whole?
From one vendor, they said it's probably right now worth about ten thousand dollars. Because of its age, because of its age.
So nothing.
Yeah.
So what, how much was the demo worth?
The demo one currently that the one company has, they have two of them coming off the end of October, early November. And they're anywhere right between two thirty-five and two fifty, depending if you, you know, modify something. They're just getting ready to go to the production line, so you know, if you, if you liked this here versus here, it's still, you still have the ability to modify it right now because it hasn't hit the production line yet. So they have the chassis and all of that stuff. They're just waiting to go into production.
Electrical issue is in the truck or is it in the, in the unit itself in the back?
Some of it is in the, is in the truck, on the trucks, was on the truck side, we got that repaired. Currently, we have no heater, air conditioning in that truck, and that's in the circuit board, and so they're looking at how to get around that right now and get that back up and running.
That's in the back part?
In the back, yes, in the patient compartment, yeah.
Yeah, it sounds like the demo unit is a no-brainer, I mean, you know, it concerns me, a twenty-year-old ambulance that's, you know, malfunctioning and it just seems like that's the most expeditious way to go. So, but then we've got the fiscal year problem. Well, actually, we don't because, no, we don't, because it's in a separate fund, so it sounds like that would.
Yeah, and potentially it's one of those, I'm sorry Travis, I didn't mean to pick up. It's one of those that we may be able to work out with the vendor as well, if, if that's the route we decided to go that we could sign the contract to purchase, and then if they kept it as a demo until after January first, and then we took delivery, then we wouldn't pay for it until then. So that's something we would have to talk about with the vendor to see what they'd be willing to do.
There's more than one vendor you're working with?
We've looked, we've looked at a couple of different vendors. One currently has a, what they did is they had a, a box and they remounted it onto a chassis. It's an older box, it's like a two thousand and five, if I remember right. Which the electrical system and everything's been gone through, but you're still dealing with a two thousand and five box. And then the other company is the one that has two brand-new demos that are coming off the factory line late October, early November. So we've, we've talked to two, we know two for sure that have demos, we've talked to probably four others, and they said they're not expecting any demos in quite, for quite some time.
And this demo's a four-wheel drive?
It is a four-wheel drive, one of them is on a five fifty chassis, the other one's on an F four fifty chassis. So really, the only difference is the suspension, and in the end, that factory suspension comes off and they put on the liquid spring suspension on the back anyways, so really, you don't really, you don't gain a whole lot going to the F five fifty from the four fifty. It's just, she doesn't know, at this time, they don't know which one's coming off the line first, would be the five fifty or the four fifty.
Is that two thousand and five box or is that like a fiberglass box or is that something that's got more life to it than?
You know, they, they've got some good life to them, if you can remount them at an, I would say around that ten, twelve-year mark, you can usually get two chassis to one box use, and then they're, you know, that twenty-to-twenty-four-year-old timeframe when you retire them out. Typically, the chassis goes bad before the box does. So what, what typically, what, what you see is, is if you're doing a remount, you know, it's on a ten-to-twelve-year-old box, and then you put a new chassis on, have a new chassis put underneath it, you run it another ten to twelve years on the second chassis, and then you decommission the ambulance and you, you move to a brand-new.
Yes, that, that two thousand and five box, that's out at seventeen years already.
It's out seventeen years already and we'd be, this one, we, we would look to keep it probably twelve years, so you'd be out twenty-nine years on that box. Now granted, it has a new electrical system and stuff like that in it, so it's got the same, has the same electrical system and everything in it that you would get from a new one, but you're still dealing with the body that is is that seven, that seventeen-year-old body at this point.
Plus, could be, you're gonna be able to get parts for it down the line.
Yeah, I mean, if, that's, that's the one thing you run into potentially, is that if it's, if that manufacturer goes out of business and then their, their parts become obsolete, sometimes it's in, in it, you can get the smaller stuff, but if you were to get in an accident, say somebody, you know, T-bones the ambulance, insurance company says it's, it's fixable, getting the doors and stuff, because that company's gone, can be a problem.
But this demo was a new box and a new.
It's brand-new, yeah, hasn't even been built yet.
And they're saying two thirty to two fifty?
Yeah, two thirty to two fifty, depending on the options, you know, we've looked at the specs already that were sent to us, and there's only a few minor things that we would potentially do to it to make it more identical to the two other trucks that we would have in the fleet, so that way it's more user-friendly for the, for the crews as they, because we rotate our trucks monthly to keep, try to keep the miles even on them, just more for ease of the, of the crews working in them. So, but I don't think it's anything, looking at, you know, looking at it and knowing that it's not built yet, I don't think it's anything drastic that will affect price dramatically.
So where do we come up with the rest of the money, that's the question.
Well, that, that, that's, that's the question, you know, I know there are some communities and counties around the country that are, and I'm probably going to use the old term for it, but the, the COVID money, they have used COVID money to purchase ambulances or supplement ambulance purchase. And I know that's probably not the most current word for it, but I know that, that, that's been an option and in place have done it because it's for healthcare and it's for treatment of patients. And so I know that's potentially an option. But other than that, I don't, don't know what the county funds look like for, for that.
Are these gas or diesel units?
The two that are coming off are diesel. The preference, our preference would be to at some point switch to gas because of the the emissions issues. But right now, it's kind of hard to be that picky because they're just not readily available. We haven't had a ton of emissions issues, we have had some, but Ford has worked with us on those on our newer truck. And really, it's, you know, we just have to, we, we, we have to be very diligent about making sure even when they're not in the front rotation being driven on those off months that they're being, you know, driven out, you know, ten, fifteen miles on the highway once a week, every other week, just to, just to be drove instead of sitting there, so. At least that's what they're, that's what the Ford dealerships are telling us because they're saying that the, the death sits in there and starts to crystallize in the tank, and then it plugs up the filter and then you start to have issues. But they're saying if you drive them once to twice a week, or once, once every week or every two weeks and you get it out ten, fifteen miles, so basically, if you run it out to the coffee cup and back, you know, they're like, it just moves everything in that tank. The bad part about ambulances with, with death is there's no way to put it, to do an automatic regeneration, regen on it. Whereas the fire truck, I can pull it up outside, leave it run, set the high idle, and it'll automatically go into regen since it's sitting there and continue to regen. The ambulances, there's no, there's no aftermarket thing to put on it, anything, if they haven't come up with that. So, yes, long-term, I, 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 we would prefer to switch to gas. Mileage would be a little bit less, but we would, we would lose the emissions portion of it.
How much money did we put into it here?
I think we're, is it thirty-five thousand we put in a year?
We started at thirty-five and then we've been adding three percent each year of the three years. You know, back four years ago, we thought that was the way to go and that that might help with the increasing prices, but obviously.
We did good for about three years and then the whole economy tanked and everything went sky-high and you know, even if we would have increased it to five percent the last two years, you know, I mean, it's, it's taken such a hit. It, it's really become, become hard to guess what these vehicles are going to cost in the end.
And we used to do twenty-five thousand a year.
That's how I take it.
Yeah, I remember when I first came here, eight years, eight years ago, and I, I think that was one of the, within the first six months of being here, we were due for an ambulance and I came in and we had, we were like, at like a hundred and eight thousand or a hundred and ten thousand in the, in the kitty to do an ambulance, so you know, prices have dramatically went up over the last eight years.
So if we could hold off till January, we have, when do we put the next, the thirty-five thousand in?
Is your mic on?
It's, sorry.
But wasn't close enough.
When do, if, if the, when does the thirty-five thousand dollars?
January.
January.
Yeah, so we'll have a hundred, hundred and eighty-six, I think.
Yeah, eighty, hundred and eighty-six and some change.
Oh, you already got that thirty-five.
Correct, yes, on January first, it'd be a hundred and eighty-six and some.
Because next year is the fifth year.
Correct, yes.
So we're still fifty-four thousand short, that's at two hundred and forty thousand.
Yeah. What's, what's the payment schedule, Son, Matt, you've got to have a certain percentage upfront?
It depends on the manufacturer, some will, some will, some will do a discount if you pay for the chassis right away, then they can get that off their books. I, you know, I, I know with the manufacturer we went with, with the fire truck, we, we get, I can't remember how much, there's a percentage discount, when the chassis is complete, we inspect it, it's good to go, the city cuts them a check for that. They can then take that off their, you know, off their books, they're not holding that kind of money, three hundred and some thousand dollars out there. I don't know, on the, on the ambulance side, that's something I, you know, when I, when I meet with, actually I have a meeting on Friday with this, want the vendor with the new vehicles. That's definitely stuff we can bring up and, and find out, you know, if they, you know, will take payment early or there's a discount or whatnot, so.
Well, we're gonna, I think the only decision is if we wait two, two years or if we take the demo.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to find the money, I mean, we'll, we'll find the money, it's there, but somewhere.
But how it.
Big sale.
How it pays out makes a difference to us because we're adding seventy thousand over a two-year period. If by completion of the, the project, you know, that put us on anyway, that would be in fair shape.
Yeah, you know, the only thing that scares me of waiting, ordering a chassis and waiting eighteen to twenty-four months, the truck could be two seventy.
Yeah.
Or two eighty, depending on what the market does with metal and parts and equipment and things like that.
It, it locks in the price at time of order, doesn't it? That's the way that normally work these things.
Normally, yes, we have seen some manufacturers out there, and I don't know about this one in particular, that have actually Ted kind of come back and put a, added an extra amount to that because the price went up fifty thousand dollars and they couldn't eat it over two years.
We had that issue come up on a semi that we ordered a few months ago, that, that was an issue, but the, the man or the, the dealership honored their original order, even though they really wanted us to give a little more.
Yep, no, absolutely, yeah. So I, I couldn't give you a definite answer on whether that one hundred percent locks in the price
Yeah.
on it or, or not.
Those are just some questions you may want to have, bring up when you visit with the manufacturers.
Okay, yep, definitely, I'll make sure I have those wrote down and in the meantime, if, you know, you guys think of anything else that you'd like me to find out, please email me, call me, let me know. And like I said, I meet with them on Friday morning, so I can definitely have those answers and have those back to you at the next commission meeting, if you'd like me to come back and report back to you on those.
I think so.
Okay, because I was gonna say, if we just tell them to buy the demo, because.
Well, yeah, that's kind of my thoughts too, because I don't think we can wait eighteen months.
No, but I mean, if he talks to him on Friday, I don't think we want to wait until no, he's gonna talk to him again, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I, I would, you know, I mean, I, I think we should go in the demo direction. And I'm, I'm not sure that any of the other options are very attractive, particularly, I mean, it's not like ambulances are never an. I mean, it's, it's not, it's not an uncommon problem and, you know, not being able to get parts and.
It's a need.
Yeah, exactly.
So I suppose he can, we can just have him go the demo route, I mean, not, not lock it in right now, but I mean, he can talk to them and say, we're probably gonna go the demo route and.
I can get him, I can get a more firm price
Yeah.
on it, and actually, you know, get, get a more firm price and get that in, in writing and bring it back to you. And, you know, then you guys can make your decision on what you want to do with it, and if that's something that you're thinking, we can, you know, we can pursue that, the, this manufacturer that has the two demos that are coming off the assembly line, they are part of Sourcewell contract, so we don't have to go to bid on it or anything like that, we can buy direct through them because they've already had their contract with Sourcewell, and so they would, what the price they give us is the, is the Sourcewell contract price, that's already all factored out, so.
And we meet next Thursday, so if they were able to get something in writing.
Sure, yep.
Yeah, I like buying demos, by the way, too, I've done that a few times, and for the same or lesser price, you're getting something that that manufacturer is taking to shows or into rounded customers, and they're usually pretty well-made with, with the sort of things that, that those that are good sale points.
Yeah, you know, going the demo route on an ambulance is not a bad thing. It, you know, most of the time, they are, they're not the low-end, low-end ambulance. They're probably not the most elaborate, every bell and whistle that they sell, but it has, like you said, the most attractive options that people look for on them, and it's really, it comes down to, you know, the due diligence of the, the agency buying it to make sure it's, you know, will be appropriate for, for their use.
You know, I, I think for like an ambulance, it would be laid out nicely, so it's an efficient layout
Yes.
for, for the users to get what they need out of which compartment.
Yeah, the, usually, this truck, these two trucks have a little bit different layout than what we're used to, but it's the, I would call it the up-and-coming layout, it's got better restraint systems for the attendants, for the EMTs and paramedics in the back, it's got four-point harnesses to wear in case you're involved in a crash, it has a little different layout with countertops and stuff. Not a huge amount, but what's more practical nowadays with the type of equipment you carry. And, you know, really, it's, it's, you know, they are, they are nice vehicles, the ones that they're going to build, so.
That's my point.
Okay, I will meet with them on Friday, and then if Kerry wants to put me on the agenda for next Thursday, that's fine. And I will come back with some questions answered and hopefully some more solid, solid numbers and bring it back to you guys, so, okay.
Thanks, Matt.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Oh, I do have one question, Matt, this, the ambulance you're gonna decommission, is that something we can sell to a different town or is it just done?
You know, we could, we could put it up for sale and, and sell it potentially, we could, there's a chance they may take it on trade, and then they would get rid of it, which, you know, would be good, that may help offset, you know, if they, even if they gave us ten thousand for it, that could help offset, you know, the few modifications that we want to make and keep the price right about where it's at now. So I'll find out on Friday and show it, you know. Um, so, uh, I'll find out, uh, on Friday, uh, and she'll, you know, she's coming here so she can look at it. And, uh, you know, give us a better, uh, a better option on that. Uh, but, uh, you know, something like that, it might be better off. Uh, to trade it and then we're not holding onto it and hoping we can sell it, um, especially if they'll take it on trade and then that might help offset the cost a little bit.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'll definitely check into that.
Thanks.
Yep.
Cool. Tell them we're taking fifty thousand.
See what kind of magic I can work. Drew. We have the first reading of ordinance twenty-two, twenty-two dash zero eight.
Let's do Myron's first.
Oh, that's not the one. Okay. Okay. So twenty-two, twenty-two dash zero nine. That one?
Yes.
Okay. An ordinance amending the twenty-thirteen revised joint juris, joint zoning regulations for Clay County and the city of Vermillion. A request to rezone land located at nineteen nineteen West Cherry Street, Vermillion, South Dakota, five-seven-zero-six-nine. From A-one agriculture to L-one light industrial for a grain terminal grain processing facility.
On the twenty-fifth of last month, the county planning, uh, planning zoning board met with the city planning zoning board. And, uh, recommended approval of the rezoning petition. Other than that, we're pretty much same spot we were back in what? Whenever, um, everything's pretty much the same.
Yeah. Except I, I understand that the city, um, only rezoned the south section. They did not rezone the north section. And so here, here's, here's my concern. Um, my concern is that if we pass this as is. Then the Myrins are back where they were at the beginning because our ordinance won't match theirs. And so I'm wondering if the most expeditious thing to do to get this resolved. Um, I did talk to the mayor about this. She is willing to bring this up for reconsideration. She's talking to the city attorney about that. And, um, discussing it, we thought probably the most expeditious way to go forward is to match our approval to the city's approval. So that the joint jurisdiction issues are resolved. And the Myrins at least get most of their property rezoned immediately. Um, and we don't have the problem with, yeah, with, with two different ordinances and making the lawyers figure that out. But, uh, the city is willing to reconsider and I would suggest that this should be a topic of discussion at our joint meeting. Um, and, uh, we should decide the best direction to go in. Uh, I, you know, I, I, I think that there is some, um, there's some likelihood that on reconsideration. Uh, it, it could, it could pass the city council. Um, so I, you know, I, this is not, this is not an objection to the direction we're going in. This is trying to figure out a more efficient way to get there, right? Um, because, because the ci- the city council, um, uh, apparently some members had objection to. Uh, the northern section being rezoned because, um, I, uh. What I heard, and you know, this was a very long, complicated conversation, so it may, may not be right, but what I heard is that it was originally. And has always been an ag, ag one zone. Um, I, I, is that, is that true?
No.
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
So.
So, but, but, but the city council, apparently that was part of, part of the discussion. And so I think that the city is willing to reconsider, but my suggestion is that we at least get that first part done. That we match our zoning change, uh, because it's joint jurisdiction to the cities. Um, and that we, we just get it, we get that done. And then the only issue is that northern section. And I, you know, I have no doubt, but that our commission is completely, um, committed, uh, to getting the whole parcel done. It's just a matter of working, working with the city, um, to, uh, to make that happen.
So there's, I have two issues with this. First of all, if we. We don't have to go along with the city. We do have to vote on their motion and amendment, or we need to take it up. We don't have to agree with them. And if we don't agree with them, their amendment dies. And the original ordinance or the original petition goes on to the second reading, because we both have to agree to amendments. They can't just unilaterally make those motions themselves. So if we don't agree to it, their amendment dies. Second of all, I can't believe you've been talking to the mayor about this issue. They've already had these meetings. They've already made their decision and you're getting information that we didn't get. We're not supposed to be talking to anybody else about these. We are judges in this. I am, I am, I'm appalled that you would do that and put us in that position.
Well, so this was a public meeting.
Did you talk to her at the public meeting or did you talk to her in private?
I, I talked to her at a meeting to find out what happened.
Did you talk to her in that meeting? That public meeting?
No, I was not there, but she informed me of the meeting, which was a public meeting and everything that happened was absolutely public.
Okay. However, you want to play it. You still talk to people who have already heard that stuff. This is another reason why we need to be in those joint jurisdiction meetings together.
Yes, I, I agree with that. It is extremely difficult. If we walk into a meeting and have no idea what went on at the city council, that is extremely difficult. It shouldn't, it shouldn't happen.
Yeah, well, that will be brought up tomorrow night and discussed.
And I, I, you know, I, I don't, I think that we need a closer relationship with respect to joint jurisdiction. I agree with you that we should have joint meetings when we discuss these things. I think it's unfair to applicants for them to have to go to four separate meetings in a row to get something done. I mean, but I, I, and I think we're all on the same page, right? We want the same things to happen. And so let, let, let's just make it happen. Um, we can, um, uh, you know, we could, we, we can pass this and then, uh, uh, you know, we're nowhere. Um, or, you know, we can pass what the city passed and we have gotten something done. And we have a basis for moving on in discussion to get the second part of it done or not. I mean, you know, if the city doesn't change their vote, uh, for reconsideration, then, uh, you know, the Myrins are still up a creek.
They don't have to change their motion for reconsideration if we vote against it. Because then their, um, their amendment dies. The application goes forward as presented to the second reading. We have to agree to their amendment and if we don't, their amendment dies.
But I, I think both sides, okay, so I'm, I'm, I'm gonna ask our, our county attorney here. As I understand it, both sides have to agree in order to move forward.
Yes.
Yeah. So the fact that the city agreed to one thing, if we then agree to exactly what they agreed to. We have, uh, we, we have, we have the rezoning change done that they agreed to.
Maybe you change yours, but I don't think that that's, I'm not gonna speak for the commission, but I don't think that's what's up for you today is. Changing your guys' initial decision, which was city, county, you're agreeing. Commission meeting went together, now the city's saying, no, we don't actually agree we're changing it.
Yes.
You don't have to agree to their change.
Right. So, so tell us the best way for the Myrins to move forward. That's what I want to know.
I think that's your decision as a commission, not mine.
No, no, I'm not asking you to make a decision. I'm asking you for strategic legal advice on what is the most efficient way.
That is not her job.
That, that's not what I'm here for, Betty. That's what the commission's job is to do. You are all supposed to decide what is best for the county resident.
Okay. So, so let me ask it, let, let me ask the question this way. If we go ahead and today, if we were to pass exactly what the city passed. Um, would the Myrins then have, um, most of their property rezoned or? No, I, I wanna, I wanna know your legal opinion.
Cause I think you also said that you'd be up a creek still. So what if the city never changes? He felt a creek and half of his property is what he wants, half of it is not.
But we're not voting to rezone today.
We can't vote on the rezone until the second reading, when the joints are together. So. If their amendment dies, they're still what their petition is asking for. We still have, I mean, even if we agreed to the city's amendment, we still have to go to the second reading.
Right.
But we don't have to agree to the city, the city's amendment.
So what you're saying is like, uh, strategically, what we could do would be to pass this as is. Um, and then if they reconsider it, uh, it, it passes. If they don't reconsider, where are we?
Well, then it fails.
Yeah. And then.
But here's the problem. I mean, we need, we need to get through the process first. We can either let their amendment die from lack of motion or lack of second, or it fails a vote. Or. We can pass it. But if it fails, their, their petition goes forward to the second reading as presented. Because their amendment dies. If we don't agree to their amendment, that's no different than us changing the amendment today. Having something else and then the city have to come back. Just because they had their meeting first, doesn't mean they get to dictate the rules of what we have to follow.
So you're, so your, your suggestion would be to pass it, pass it a second time and hope the city, um.
Well, because there's a problem. The problem with what the city did is with their property, the railroad goes across both properties. Well, if you have light industrial in one and that railroad comes across into the other property, then they're in violation. So to split it.
And it wouldn't be a pre-existing non-conforming use?
Correct.
Cause it seems like it's a pre-existing non-conforming use.
But now all of a sudden you have a light industrial area that's crossing over into the ag.
But it would be a pre-existing non-conforming use.
Not when you've changed the zoning on the majority of it. And I'd like to know why they won't gr- grant the.
Yeah, and I, I, I think that's worth discussing, um, tomorrow night. Um.
That's, that's not tomorrow night.
No, but I.
This isn't tomorrow night. We can't talk about this tomorrow night.
Um, uh, you know, I'm just trying to figure out the most efficient way to do this. Um.
I'm not looking for efficient. I'm looking for the right way to do it.
Well, all right.
And letting the, letting the city dictate to us what we need to do.
So here, uh, my understanding, and, and so I, I'm hoping this is, that you deem this a legal question. My understanding is that both bodies have to pass it in order for it, for, 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 uh, the rezone to be effective. Is that true?
Yes.
So if we pass it, but the city doesn't, what happens?
It dies.
Nothing. Cause in.
Right. And that's my fear.
The county commissioner and the city council must be sure of the proposed actions before any changes or modifications are made.
Yeah. So, 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 yeah. So that's my fear, right? My fear is that, um, uh, that, that the city doesn't agree to it. And we're back where we started.
It's possible.
And how do we, I mean, is it, is, is there a strategy that prevents that from happening? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm, I'm trying to get to, I do not, something, something that helps the Myrins here. And I, I, you know, I'm not a lawyer. Um, and, and so I, you know, I'm, I'm asking you, um, is there a path?
That's not her job. That's our job to make those decisions. It's her job to defend those decisions as long as they're legal.
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Well, that, you're not asking a legal, you're.
Legal implications.
I know, Phyllis. Phyllis, you have a question or comment?
Um, if we should pass as Betty asks, there is no reason that the city would find to change. So we're in the same position of having a, or weren't, to me, we're in a worse position.
Yeah, although the only thing I'd say, Phyllis, is that my fear is that nothing passes. That's my fear.
Well, then we have to start again because they.
And that's, yeah, that's what I'm trying to.
Can I finish speaking, please? Um, it was their choice to change what was requested. Uh, we are not agreeing with that. So what are the choi- you don't agree with them in order to say we don't agree?
Yeah. So I, I, what I'm trying to figure out is the best path that helps the Myrins the most, the soonest. So I, I would like to hear from other commission members too. Uh, you know, I, what I don't want to have happen is that we, we have to go through four more meetings. Um, before anything changes. If we can change one thing now, I'd like to see it changed. Um, it, you know, I, just, just, uh, and I, I agree with you, Phyllis. This, this is not the outcome I want. Um, you know, this is not the outcome we were all looking for. Um, but on the other hand, we, we've, we've got to figure this out in a way that's good for, um, you know, the community member who has, uh, you know, applied.
Good. First, I have a question for my fellow commission members. How many of either went to, watched? Or watched the city council, uh, action on this matter? Who has?
None, because we're not supposed to. Legally, we are not supposed to.
That's, I don't think that's true.
Yeah, it is because we've had these discussions at the, at the end of the. What do you want? The state conventions. They said, until you get in here, you cannot have these conversations. You cannot get information ahead of anybody else. Betty, it's already been to court. Don't shake your head at me.
No.
These people have already told us, and these are attorneys telling us, do not put yourself in this position. You are the judge. This is no different than if you were the judge and you went and talked to the plaintiff or to the prosecuting attorney. And got your story straight and the defendant's sitting over there and comes in two weeks later to the, to the hearing. And you're already, you're already done and everybody's already made their decision.
Sure. This is where we do have a legal, uh, opinion. Now. My opinion is.
Is your mic on, Dick?
Uh, it is.
Yep. Uh, I think, I think that, that what is. Is permissible would be, that was a public meeting that has been both published, the minutes been published in the newspaper already. It's available out, uh, the, the full meetings of, uh, available to the public as well as to, uh, everyone involved. Uh, so I'm thinking that since that's a public meeting that, uh, we're there. Uh, this was quite a, uh, I watched the meeting, by the way. Jail me if you have to. Uh, but. For me to do a full, uh, informed, fully informed by public information. Decision today, uh, I think it was the right thing to watch that video. You can watch it tomorrow if you want to. It's available for, what is it, sixty days, whatever? That meeting was a, uh, pretty contentious. It actually, what they, they, uh, ended up with a, a motion that eventually passed around the end. They circled around through three other motions to get there, including tabling it so that it would just kill the, kill the, the application. Uh, and I noticed that the Myrins, uh, they left in frustration perhaps. I, that's an interpretation. But they left before the, uh, it got around to the, the end decision. And, uh, I think that, I think that, uh, Travis is right. I think it's incorrect or wrong to. Get, get into ex parte communications with the mayor. I think that was a wrong thing to do, but.
In, in retrospect.
Yeah.
I accept that and I apologize to the commission.
But I don't, I don't consider watching, uh, the other half of this decision, uh, on a public record meeting. As being ex parte communication. And I'd ask our lawyer to, to.
I've researched this one. So I'm looking for statutes and I can certainly, I don't know how fast I can find it on Westlaw.
I can chime in on this.
Okay. Thank you, Alexis.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think this is the, the quandary that this poses. The first thing I will say is I don't think this is a violation of open meetings. For anyone to attend to those things because if it's a published meeting, um, of another body. Commissioners can, you know, attend those and we don't have to worry about a quorum, those types of things. I think the component that Travis is referencing and where this gets into a bit of a sticky area, and this comes full circle to this notion. Of should we be meeting separately? The issue becomes, and the case law that I can think of that. The issue becomes, and the case law that I can think of that jumps out at me was in reference to a, it was a conditional use permit, not a rezone. But there was a case that had to do with one of the commissioners going out and viewing the property on their own. And that's specifically what Travis is talking about is taking information and consideration. That you wouldn't otherwise have, and that was deemed a no-no. And so we sit here and say, wow, it's a public meeting. Can you guys get that information and consider it? You certainly can listen to or attend public meetings. And if you're educating yourself on things, on the one hand, I would say that's a good thing, but, but here we come back to. I don't know that anyone can amend anything without you all there. That's taking an action on the application. And I would be fascinated to know what the legal authority to do so is, an absent legal authority. That action then is invalid and you guys are right back to where things are at. So I'd be curious to know, I mean, my understanding of today's matter is it's a first reading. No action is being taken. It's a first reading. It's at the public hearing and subsequently a vote to approve the request by the applicant or deny it. If you all were raising it on your own volition in that second paragraph of section fourteen of the joint jurisdiction zoning ordinance. Then I think you can get into amending things. But I would just be fascinated to know the legal authority to amend anything. Now, if it's an approval of one provision of the application. And a denial of another provision, I guess I'd have to take a look at that application further. But those actions and decisions, it is very clear. You all must be together for those things. And that's where I think it becomes impractical. And I'm really glad to hear everybody discussing. That we should be talking about these meetings together going forward because now you're in this quandary. The city apparently wants to do something different. And you guys are saying, can I consider that? Can I consider that discussion? We weren't even present for? How do we weigh in on that? And the answer to that comes at the next meeting, at that joint meeting, public hearing, second reading, where then you can vote or not. So I don't know if that answers all of it, but as far as, you know, yes, you all can listen to public meetings, but I think this is a nuance of. What do you do when that maybe puts you at odds with other aspects in your role?
So I, I do have a question, Lexi. So you're saying we can listen to these public meetings and they're, and they're published. But it's, it's different because it's a public meeting that we weren't invited to as a, as voting members on this application. I mean, it's, it, it's not really just a, a public meeting. And then how does that work if all five of us showed up to a joint jurisdiction public meeting? That we weren't invited to, but we're going to be making a decision on.
Oh, I completely agree that puts everyone in a conundrum of this. Because that's where my, my question comes in. And this one I would have to do further research on. How does that jive with the case law that specifically talks about you guys not seeking outside sources of information? I mean, like you pointed out, and I, I don't know the answer to that. We'll have to do some research on that, but it's out there. It is a public meeting. I mean.
It can all be solved if we just have the first readings together.
Correct. I mean, this puts, there's no question to be asked. And I still come back to, if there is some authority that someone can cite me for an act, I, I don't anticipate you guys voting on anything today, right? This is just the first reading.
Right.
So how did the city take any action without you?
They moved to, uh, go to a second reading. They're in the same shape we are right now.
But they've amended, they, there's an amendment. There, there's an amendment on the table.
Yeah.
Whether it's at the same one or not, I don't, it depends on how we want to take it up. I don't know how we can vote without the other board available, but they did.
Think you can do anything but a first reading and kick it on to the second reading. I don't know how you do anything else. And at that reading, then I think that's when there's a discussion about whether or not the city's action. I mean, wasn't it an amendment or did they approve a portion of the application and deny a portion? I mean, that they def, they can't.
What if they, yeah.
They can't do that without you.
I, and I think what they did was one of your favorite terms, I think you split the baby. They approved, they approved the south part and, and. Well, they omitted the north part. They left it as ag. So.
So that their motion.
Was reduce the, the. Scope of the application to the south half of the, of the property.
Did they conduct a public hearing? Which the answer to that, even if they had some type of comment is that it, I mean, from my standpoint, that doesn't qualify as a public hearing because that has to be done together, right? We all agree that has to be done together and you guys weren't there.
Yep. And you know, yes, I think that we're all getting around to what my, my position has been, been that. On each of these actions in, in the joint jurisdiction, that the bodies have to. Act jointly for it to really work out well. And this, this particular situation is a perfect example of that. That we really can't have a full and frank discussion among all the parties involved. Unless we're all at the table at the same time at both meetings. That, that's my, that's my personal, personal opinion. You know, I have no legal opinion, but, but that's where I'm coming from. It's the, where I've been coming from, from the get-go here.
Yeah. It doesn't really do you guys any good, does it? Half of it.
I, I would like a chance to talk on this for a while.
Yeah, I think he needs to talk.
Yeah.
I want to hear because he's the one that's actually doing.
Now would that be okay?
Yes. I think he does. I mean, I, to me, sitting back here and saying, well, making his decision for him that we don't know all the facts. We gotta have.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make one statement as I'm handing these out. These are the problems that happen.
You, you're gonna have to speak into the microphone for the people on the, on Zoom.
It's okay if I sit down here.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Just, just make sure the button's up. Okay. Can everybody hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Phyllis, can you hear him?
Yes.
Okay. These are the kinds of problems that happen when somebody changes the zoning on a business in particular without speaking to the business owner. Because nobody, nobody besides me knows my business the way that I do. And particularly like in the grain business, this is a lot more intricate than a lot, a lot of people realize. We're regulated by a lot of agencies that people don't realize. The financing, the insuring, a lot of things that we have to do are way different than probably what applies to a different business. And that's where we're getting a lot of our, our complications. One statement I just love is nobody's telling you, you can't continue to operate this grain elevator. Well, guess what? Upon realization of this, basically we're down to handling our, the only grain we can handle right now is the grain that we raise. Okay. So in my mind, that means our business is essentially shut down. And of course, we've mentioned many times, we're trying to sell this facility. Now, I don't know why we keep getting treated like this is something bad or negative. I've been in the grain business for thirty years. My dad has been in Agnes for fifty years and somebody's saying. We don't have the right to try and resell this, to get our investment back. It really upsets me. But. So I did want a chance to talk to you guys. I wanted to explain why I think it's important that all of the facility be zoned the same. And I, and I, I, I try and present myself as being researched and I apologize because this is going to take a while. I appreciate you giving me the time. If you watched the meeting with the city, I was given. Graciously seven minutes instead of five minutes and never given a chance to speak again. It appalls me, the decisions that are being made about my business, my parents' business, without me giving any input. Because again, nobody knows more about what's going on here than me. How this is affecting my business than me. How this is affecting me trying to sell this than me. So I do appreciate when you have some questions that you can't answer or thrown by me. Cause odds are I, I know it and I've researched it. I've tried to, every time I've tried to come in front of you guys. Everything I've tried to talk about, I've tried to be backed up with my own research. And I have, I've learned I've had to do that because I've been told many things that upon me digging into turned out to not be true. Okay? So. Well, what is my situation? Okay. This is the second request that I've made for zoning. In my minds, we've jumped through all the hoops. We did everything that everybody asked us to. The city requested us to drop our heavy industrial zoning request, which at that time was the only category that allowed for grain elevators. Okay? I was asked by this board. Ms. Smith directly to drop the heavy industrial request, right? Okay. Now put you guys in that position, which I did. And the reason we did that was because we had a plan. Developed by the city, which actually goes back to what my original request was, which was I was told I could not do. So here we are. Not too long ago, the city held their own separate meeting, which I questioned over and over. I was given some statutes that were supposed to explain why it allowed them to meet separately. I tried to research those. Maybe I'm just not smart enough to figure that out, but I could not figure it out on my own. And I could not help get it figured out with the assistance of some folks in peer. Okay. So. Maybe there is something that says that that can happen, but in my mind, that absolutely should not happen. When I read. The rules of the joint jurisdiction, all, it says all the meetings are supposed to be joined. Seems laid out pretty clearly to me. And if that wasn't legally how it's supposed to happen. Then that should have been fixed a long time ago. Okay? But it just makes sense. I really, twice I've been burned now by this city meeting first. Adjusting, changing, rejecting. And, and the idea of, the idea of them throwing out an alternative and you guys agreeing to that for the sole purpose of. Getting something done, even it's all, if it's only what the city wants. Well, you know what? After the nightmare that we've gone through, I just, I, I'm about disgusted enough to say, you know what? That's not good enough. And if this isn't going to get approved, I'll discuss a little bit later what I think the action should be and what I am going to push very, very hard for. Okay? But again, I feel like we jumped through all the hoops that we were asked to. Here we are, six months later. Now, why do I bring that up? This is maybe not relevant, but to us it's relevant. About three weeks, weeks ago or so. We're going through another zoning situation with all of our properties on lower Vermillion. We own about four or five different properties, addresses down there, ranging from a half a million Bushel. Grain facility to some empty lots, to some rental houses, to some grain bins. We discovered. About three or four days before the third rene, reading, that all of our zoning down there is going to be changed. From planning commission to second reading, it went through three weeks. Now, why, why is that important to me? Because basically what they did is they created a brand new category. And they're changing all our portions of seventeen blocks. Basically everything that joins or runs along the railroad tracks. Which includes all of our properties down there. Now Drew, if I'm not mistaken, when the promise was made to me back in December. They said it would take about three to four weeks. And they said we would be able to apply for the changes to the zoning category and our zoning at the same time.
I don't remember ever a discussion about the rezoning petition. And changes to zoning ordinance happened in parallel.
We did request that though, didn't we?
If you did, I don't remember it.
Okay.
Even very well, we'll have. But that was never a plan that we tried to.
I have pages and pages and notes. That's, that's my recollection. Okay? It was said it could be done in three to four weeks, which I laughed at. Drew laughed at. And, and I was told that we could expedite this by doing it side by side. Once we tried to do it, no, that was not the way it is a lot. Now, when the city did it on their own. They did them side by side. Now again, this is a whole nother issue. They didn't, again, didn't notify any of the owners. I happened to stumble across it while I was getting ready for the joint planning. Meeting. Now I did, we did get that tabled for a month and we're going through all that, but that happened in three weeks. Here I am going on over six months. And I still don't have a resolution in sight. And I guess I just, I, I said. Next I'll get through why I think it all needs to be done the same, but the, the current situation, very upset with. If I can't get this zoning done the way that I really feel that it should be. And, and the most back to the way that it was before this all happened. And I don't want to hammer too much on that again, how and why it happened. We've, we've been through that. But if I can't get that, then I want this joint jurisdictional agreement to go away. Because I think our case over the last, almost is coming up well over nine months. Has, has, has shown in a multitude of ways how this agreement is not working. And how it's not serving the needs in particular of the people in the joint jurisdictional agreement. This has had been an absolute nightmare. And it's, it's stopped our sale. We've lost at least two solid offers on this. I can't even get anybody to look at the facility now. I cannot get anyone in the grain business to come look at the facility. Everybody near us knows exactly what's going on here. And on top of that, they also saw what nutrient went through. There's another big organization, I think, that jumped through a bunch of hoops because of this joint jurisdictional. So that is going to be my ask. And you know, I'll be there at the meeting tomorrow night to discuss these kinds of things with you. But if this can't go through the way that, that it is, which I, I guess I felt like I was promised. Then I'm going to be very loud, very vocal, very adamant. That this goes away. Now, that's not to say that we don't need an agreement. We do. But it sure doesn't need to be structured like this. And there needs to be some kind of tiebreaker because you know what? You don't. You can't match exactly what both parties want. You're dead. Come on. And to take six months, every, every attempt. Just isn't fair. So that's kind of my summary where I'm at.
Are you gonna, are you gonna get to the point of what we're talking about today?
Yes, I am. Okay.
I'd recommend you do that.
Okay. I tried to show a map. This is kind of showing basically what the current zoning is. And this is just to take it, taken from the city's map and adding on to what I know of your guys'. All of the property on the other side of the river is and has been for quite some time, light industrial. Now, I don't believe the city has contested at all that at one time, and I'll say with a caveat, that, that all of this was zoned light industrial. That it was zoned light industrial just prior to the joint jurisdictional agreement. Now, one exception that was thrown up that I was not aware of, and I have not been able to find a legal description yet that, that. Matches it. There's a sliver along the eastern edge. That the city wants to cut off, that they said has always been cut off. Mostly what I've been looking at is. What's, what's been in the public notices? Cause we've been hammering that so much. I see where originally, the original facility where the elevator was, was zoned was, was approved. I see where all the, basically the balance of it was approved. I see that in the public notices. I don't see anything about this, this little sliver. But uh. This was all zoned light industrial prior to the joint jurisdictional agreement. And I don't believe the city contests that at all, with the exception of that little sliver.
Isn't it true that it before joint jurisdiction, it was just industrial? There was no lighter heavy? It was general industrial, general industrial. So really that, that's a nuance, but.
Actually, I think the category was called light industrial, but it was the only industrial category.
It was general industrial, but Jose keeps saying it was light industrial. Until you have to correct him and he's like this, it was general, but.
Cause when you look back at the joint. Joint agreement, it says general, there was no such thing. It's lighter heavy in there.
Okay, I know when it was approved initially in eighty seven, uh, eighty nine, that's a point where all of it. It was uh in the public notices, it says light industrial.
Thanks for that clarification.
That's, that's just again, just what I've been able to.
So where's, where's that sliver at that you keep talking that they? Well, no, I don't think that's theirs.
This is some other map. I apologize. One, if you just want to pass it down, it's the portion in blue.
Jose brought that up in the planning and zoning meeting. Objected it because no measurements with it, there's nothing.
Well, I was gonna say, if it's not plotted off, it's not, it can't be separate.
And Jose, I looked at Jose and said, is this gonna be a problem again? That sliver? And he said, no. So I don't know where this is coming from at all.
Okay.
So.
Well, I'm pretty sure.
At the city council meeting, I was trying to, I guess. Defend that or talk about that. And then all of a sudden, the top third got chopped off, but. And then again, just to finish this through, uh, the, the color in pink is, is the residential. The green, that's the trailer park that is there. Uh, the dark pink, that's all the basically the business corridor along fifty. And then you've got the whole Polaris area, which is. General industrial. Okay. So we're just requesting, yes, in our minds, back to what it was, also matching what's on the other side of the river. Why, why do we think all of it? One basic reason is, is we just feel like it should all be the same. Where you're talking about cutting off a little sliver, that puts an imaginary line in. That how, how can you know, you know, that that does kind of get to an area where uh on overflow years. We dump grain on the ground. There's actually uh the road around the building that has drive over. Where we put large augers up and we can dump grain on the ground. So what I all of a sudden I can't, I can't let grain fill flow over. Pass this imaginary line. How do, how do I stay? Conforming with that. And again, if I'm trying to sell this, how do I explain this to them? Okay, you can use all the property, but you can't use this little line. And to be quite honest, if we're trying to create some buffer. Of of agricultural on the outside of the city limits. Then why shouldn't there be the one on the inside of the city? Shouldn't it be equal? You know, but. Also, you know, it's like Travis mentioned, uh, with the, with the northern section. I mean, the railroad tracks do go into there. Now, I don't know, I can't seem to find out on my own enough to satisfy me. I keep hearing all these things about grandfathered about whether I can continue to use the track or not. I think that I can. And I would think that any reasonable group overseeing me would allow me to. But my big issue right now is if I try and sell this. Can they? And that's apparent, that's, that's the huge issue for me. Also, you know, rail rates are based on number of cars that you can do. The more cars that you can do, the better the rate you get. Part of the potential and appeal of this property is that the tracks can be expanded. That's why they were designed there and the way that they are, because they, they leave them with a, with more room to expand. I don't want to take that away from somebody uh that might want to do something. And also might be doing is just adding some more tracks. And that's true. Tracks have been there for how many years? I don't think affected anybody negatively.
So bottom line, Kevin, what you really want? If I'm getting this, if you want the whole thing. Light industry and we're, and we're done.
Right, right. And another thing that was, was I kind of talked, I meant like natural borders. All of our property lines are basically established. We either have tree lines or we have fences or we have both. And that it's, it's a natural barrier. It shows where those barriers are. And it just makes sense moving forward to either somebody buying it or the people that live around it to know, okay, these are the natural borders. This is where the thing's going to do. Now, do I think something's going to happen there? No. One of the things that's really bothering me about this is there in a shred of evidence. About something coming in that's going to negatively affect the values of those homeowners, not one shred of evidence. But what do I have? I have fifty-five years of evidence showing the use of the property, fifty-five years for ownership changes. Okay, um, and nobody's, nobody's knocked down tree lines or fences or anything that's, that it's been brought up. It's, it's operated as a grain elevator. And and. Who else wants railroad industrial track? Who else wants grain bins? Now. I would like to continue to be able to use the building for warehousing if I can. And we have other buildings that can be used for warehousing. That's part of why, yeah, I like the light industrial. It allows that. Even some light manufacturing, something like that, you know? But for the resale value, I think it's got to all be the same. And and to save confusion. Later, it just makes sense to me. If you're going to chop off that top third. Now, we, I think we will open a whole can of worms. Can I use that track or can't I? What can I use it for? Can I expand it? Anybody that buys it, what can they do with it? Um, and you know, I. I built a one twenty by five hundred sixty thousand square foot building. You can put a football field inside of it. Okay? I put that there. It didn't negatively negatively affect the values of any of those homes. And and so we have to be practical about what are the potential uses? Okay, it's been used as a grain elevator. I believe it will continue, although I'll be completely honest. Everything that's happened here over the last year, that has really shook that up. I'm having a hard time getting great elevators to talk to me. So I'm just being honest, but.
I guess, I guess I'm getting to the point here though, if nothing, you, what you're saying is very true. And I think that's one of the things that we're going to try to resolve tomorrow night to come to, to get this figured out. So if we're going to continue with this joint area, that we need to have some rules and the rules need to be followed by both sides. I think, I think the city, a lot of the people in the city feel the same way. And I think that's where we need to get. The other thing is. I just think that as far as what they're. For what I've been hearing today and what I've looked at. I don't think their amendment means anything. I think it's just they control that out there all they want, but we weren't there. We weren't there to vote on it. So that amendment doesn't mean nothing. So and it's not going to help you in the long run. If we, if we agree to that amendment, that doesn't help you anyhow. We've just already clarified that. Only have a half your property zoned, it's not the answer. So I think that we need to figure out tomorrow night, get to that second reading and come. Get this worked out.
Well, now tomorrow night has nothing to do with this. Okay.
I know it doesn't, but I'm just saying that when we get to that second reading, we get, we need to figure this out. This is ridiculous.
Well, the, the problem with splitting it is if it's all light industrial, it takes away any question. Of what they can and can't do. And I'm more worried about twenty years down the road when you have a new commission, new city council, probably new city manager, maybe even a new engineer. And they go, what, what did they imply? What did they mean? When they said, well, you can still kind of use that property the way you want. If it's all zone the same, the rules are spelled out on what they can and can't do on there. It's just makes it easier.
So, so what makes sense to me at this point is that we agree to go on to the second reading.
That's the only thing we can do. Yeah, exactly.
Can I, can I ask this? I guess anymore now, I don't even know if it's appropriate. I mean. The, the city felt the need to vote on this or not vote on this. I guess I would like a voter or show of support if you are in agreement that it all should be. Zoned light industrial so that the city has that message.
I would discourage taking a position on that today.
Okay, so. So, so this step doesn't even require a vote.
It, it's just a vote to move to the second reading.
Okay, alright. So that does really confuse me about the, the city's steps here.
Basically.
Both, on both.
Basically in saying that we're going to the second reading is that we've accepted that it should all be. Zoned light industrial.
I mean, de facto, their amendment dies. They would have to take up that amendment again if they wanted. So right now it's, it died.
And I do appreciate that as well, because I just don't think that.
And, and one of the things that you implied by. Moving to go to a second reading is that we accept. The opinion, the expertise of our, both of our planning commissions. Both planning commissions, I think unanimously approved it as proposed today.
Yours was unanimous. I think theirs was five to two.
Okay.
Just to be honest.
Yeah.
But yeah, they both did, both did approve it.
So I'd move that we go to a second reading.
Second.
A motion and a second. Roll call.
Thanks, Kevin.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Now we just have to wait for the time and date. You'll, you'll get with, or no, Kerry has to talk to Jose then, right? You got to set up the second reading. Is it dinner time yet? Drew, which one did you want to? Which is the for the twenty twenty-two oh eight?
Yes.
Egg commercial.
This is the rezone for. The hemp grinder, uh, Peterson's hemp grinder. Planning board will approve it. There was one letter, it's in the packet from the adjoining neighbor or.
Are they across the road from you, John?
No, they don't live there. They just own the property.
Homeowners both died in the last three years.
So it's. Yeah, it's a Bowman. That are, are some of the Bowman's living there then?
No.
No one's living there?
Angela.
Angie.
Yeah.
I don't think she, Phyllis came here.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, the. Farm site that they're talking about, there is nobody living there at the moment. Uh, there's nobody been living there for about three years. Uh, at the moment, I don't think there's any plans for anyone to move in there anytime soon.
Cause they talk about livestock. They got livestock.
Correct. There are still cattle there across the road. Yep. And I think their big issue was a farm site with nobody at with activity going on across the road. But I've talked with them and I think we're in an understanding.
So you have talked to them since this letter?
Not since the latter beforehand.
Okay, okay. So on the, on, on the grinder. I don't mean to cut in. On the grinder, that's all put in this building that, that you're designing.
Correct.
And so that sits in there and then you. So that's basically what you're after today is just to get that changed. So that, yeah, okay.
Yeah, after this, you'll have to apply yet for C P.
Okay.
For an agribusiness.
Well, I guess I'd move to approve it.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Now you, you are at the closest part of your property, you know, to, to the, to the neighboring property. One of the other things they brought up was, was that renters that could end up going in there. And I don't know the shape of their property at all, whether it's really likely or not. Why did you select the part that was sort of the closest to their, that, that other neighboring farm place?
Well, I guess, you know, that's, that's just the, the farm site that I own. There's already existing driveway there.
Nice new bins.
It just seemed to be a good area to have a, a building anyway.
Sure.
As far as. Least amount of dirt work and everything else that I have to do to, to do a site prep.
Okay.
I do apologize because I had to step out for a minute, but. How much, I know the letter mentioned the smell. How much smell is going to be generated from a grinding?
Uh, as far as the smell, there is uh dust collection. There's industrial vacuums that. Or collection systems that will be attached to the machine. As far as the smell, there, you know, these bales, they are dried. They don't have the pungent smell that. Yes, they don't smell like a skunk. For lack of a better.
Well, I would, I would have to. And I'm going to assume, but from what I can figure out is. The field of actual growing a live plant would smell worse than this plant's going to.
Correct.
I mean, there's gonna, I mean, not smell worse. It's distinct odor.
I mean, there's live hemp smell, there's dried hemp smell, you know, we've all smelled that sort of stuff.
Yeah, I mean, if you.
Going on through the, through the countryside during, during various times.
And as far as the, the smells on that, the, the smells really come from your top, but the material that's on about the top foot of the plant. We're dealing with everything underneath. So we're just dealing with big sticks essentially.
And those stems at those meetings are, you can't even smell them.
Yeah, you were, you were previously in previous meeting, you were describing on, on your harvesting problems, taking off the top part and then the. The next part below that.
Correct.
Okay.
I was wondering if they were. Were assuming that it was something like the alfalfa plant used to be in Vermillion.
Uh, and if you, that's, I'm assuming what everybody thinks of when you drive by that uh hay mill down by Gable. That is just a big plume of dust. No, this was a. The, the new machines here are, it's a different operation, I guess, than the one in Greenville. This would be all enclosed and all.
Well, the, the one in Vermillion that Phyllis is referencing too was they had to dry that alfalfa because it was, it came in wet.
Right.
So there was a distinct.
And this will be dried already when it comes in.
Yep.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out where they thought the smell was coming from and. Cause from my experience, I don't see how you'd have any if or be so minimal.
Yeah, it's very, very, very small smell, if any.
My experiences from a kid, I used to have to go out and plow down hemp that was like eight feet tall. Wild stuff. And we'd have to drag about fifteen feet of wire to get it so it would. Properly lay underneath. Yeah. And it smelled terrible.
Any further discussion?
This is just the first reading.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Move to go on to a second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move to the second reading. Do you have a date and time yet?
Next Thursday, you said?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're good there?
Yeah.
Okay, so next Thursday, what do you want? Nine thirty, nine twenty? What works, Kerry?
When you do get to.
I like to get the canvas out of the way if that's okay, so maybe.
Oh, definitely.
You know, nine thirty.
Okay. Nine thirty next Thursday?
Yeah, absolutely. Do you bet? You guys.
Cause we did have a motion, a second. Roll call.
Kevin.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Hacker.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. First reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero one and ordinance amending ordinance twenty thirteen dash zero four. Updated with amendments through twenty seventeen dash zero one, an amendment to section three point one four. Medical cannabis establishments and chapters two point O two definitions.
This is our marijuana zoning ordinance when we passed the first license. Back whenever we put in zoning guidelines. As our kind of cheat, this is us getting out of that cheat and doing it right. I don't think we had, Sam went through this. We had a couple, she had a couple of points that were really good. I think on eight two, hopefully just big numbers on your cases. The setbacks, um, do we want to consider setbacks from other businesses? Like for bars or anything else?
I can't imagine. I don't know why we would. Now, this is just the. I can't imagine, I don't know why we would. Now, this is just the, the dispensary.
This for all.
For all of it.
Yeah.
I can't see where that's an issue. I did
Would this have to put a, yeah, because there wouldn't, we wouldn't need a setback for yeah, for cultivation or manufacturing or, I don't, I don't, I don't know what it would, what, what good it would do or what would, what purpose it would serve. Unless.
As I recall, there was, there were setbacks for certain types of things, like the testing facility could not be on separated by just a concrete block wall or something from, from the
Yeah.
Grow.
Yeah.
And that's, that's state.
That's, yeah, that's still there because it is state law.
But as far as being set back from, I think houses is the only thing we had to set back.
Cemeteries was another one, I think.
Yeah, residential buildings, cemeteries, church, daycare.
Schools.
Yeah.
The same things that alcohol would have, I think.
Correct. I can see that. Cemeteries, you know, that was I, I can't, I can't imagine bothering them much, but that's okay. Yeah. Now, in section four, and it's on page three in mine, that each of those, you've got licenses no more than one, and then in friends three, I assume you want to update the one.
Yes.
To three.
Yeah, that's part of the
And one, two, three, four different spots. And up in section three.
That last, last time you mean, I'm not on page three.
Right. Okay, up on page three under load license location. Licenses of different classes may overlap except when otherwise prohibited by this chapter or chapter, and I would, I would go ahead and add state law.
Are you on the license?
Yeah, I'm on.
Yeah.
The ordinance creating regulations for establishments.
It should say ordinance for click on me by mandine.
Okay, I've got the other one.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I'd like to get to that one, but wrong, yeah, the zoning.
Okay, fine.
I think that was the only change they proposed. And that we're not going to do that one, then we're good to go on.
Yeah. One, one question I have is about testing facilities being required to locate in general industrial. Why, why, I mean, what's the rationale there? Because they're, they're labs, aren't they? I mean, you, you, you saw one, Dick, when you were in California, the testing operation, that's, it's a lab, and I think the, the state law requires them to be separate.
It was just in a, you know, I don't know what the zoning was, but the surrounding, surrounding businesses were mainly commercial there.
But I was, I think the thought of labs were, they'd be a lot more vehicle traffic in and out of the lab than.
I, you know, I mean, a testing lab is probably testing a
Yeah.
bunch of different things. So this would be just one of many, I mean, it would, I, I, I think we, I mean, basically, we, th- this ordinance would probably make it extremely difficult. There's only, what, three little quarter sections in the whole county that would qualify as, I, I mean, looking, I, I looked at the county zoning map and it sure looked to me like there were very, very small number of spaces that, that were general industrial, and so there's not much opportunity for yeah, for any, any, any of these businesses to locate. I think we've pretty much given up on, on medical marijuana in this county. Given this, this ordinance.
I may have missed that, Betty, have you, are you, is it?
You're saying that none should be general?
No, no, I'm, I'm, what I'm saying is that this is, you know, the, the, the structure of this ordinance is really, really, really restrictive and, you know, the testing. You know, the, the likelihood that a, I mean, we're, we're basically making it almost impossible for testing to take place in the county. Because we have such a small number of districts that would be eligible, and this would be a lab situation where they would be testing a number of other products. And so, you know.
Don't we, don't we kind of assume though that those labs will be in Vermillion or in a city?
Well, no.
Well, no, not necessarily, but
Yeah, but that, I mean, that's this ordinance, I think you're right, assumes that.
Is it, is it just the testing that's in general? That's what, that was my other question.
The manufacturing is in general also. And so is the, no, no, they take that back, just the, just the manufacturing and the testing are in general.
Yeah, and of course, the, the issue there is that for the most part, manufacturing goes along with cultivation and dispensing. And so you're pretty much saying that every facility, you know, is gonna, is, is, is gonna have to be in one of those three tiny quarter section.
No, I don't think so. I don't think so at all.
Really?
No, not to the manufacturer.
Well, then we need to put that commercial and general.
Yeah.
Right now, it's just a general.
Yeah. Yeah, I, yeah, if it's in, if it's in, I mean, if, if it matches, right, C one and I two for both, it will work. But if you separate out manufacturing and limit that to only general industrial, which is the way this reads, that's, that, that, that would be a problem for any business.
The manufacturing needs to be in general industrial. I mean, that is, because that, that goes along even with what the city has, I mean, they're putting those types of facilities in the general industrial based on traffic, I mean, other than the restaurant.
Are you guys saying manufacturing in place of cultivation or place of processes?
Well, there's no manufacturers. It's cultivation has got commercial and general.
Yeah, I think we're going
Manufacturing is just general.
Yeah, the state, the definite, let's look at the definition.
That's processors, manufacturer.
Because I think, you know, I think the state, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I think that the state has manufacturing means basically compounding, and if you're looking at medical marijuana, the cultivation facilities with the dispensaries are also actually creating the product on site, which is you know, defined, I think, as manufacturing. I mean, do, do I have that wrong?
Carter Lecter, five star campus. The way that this works is that the cultivators for medical marijuana, the only thing that they can do as far as in-house making it is they can sell the flower itself or they can turn them into pre-rolls, and these are flavorless joints, nothing special, just for medication. Once it comes to the processors, though, these guys can take said flower, the, the cultivator will sell to them. They take that flower and they can, like Betty said, compound it, basically condense it down into a more concentrated form. And that would be, you know, their resins and moon rocks, whatever they end up coming up with with their own ideas. But as far as the testing facilities, though, they're typically going to have anybody that makes a product or creates a flower has to send it to them to be tested. So they're constantly going to be testing other people's products that are coming in. Typically, when I send in a test for our hemp stuff, it takes five, six days to get back results, so it's, I wouldn't say that there's vehicles going in and out all the time. I imagine they probably have a workforce that shows up at, you know, UPS shows up, I imagine.
Yeah, and I, I guess what strikes me is that for medical marijuana, it really is important, I think, for the economic viability of these organizations to be able to compound their own product on site. It really, really makes a big difference, and I'll, I'll just give you a personal example. You know, in California, my husband worked with medical marijuana operation that provided for him a very specific compound for Parkinson's disease that was phenomenally effective, better than anything that is out on the regular medical market. And so a person who couldn't hold a cup of coffee was able to feel rock steady most of the time. That's a, you know, but, but, you know, for financial viability for these organizations, you know, getting that manufacturing in the same facility is what creates the profit margin that allows medical marijuana dispensaries to
So they can be on the same facility, can't they?
Well, not the way this is written. That's what I'm suggesting. I'm suggesting that we add you know, light industri, well, sorry, sorry, that we add commercials, C one to general industrial so that they're able to do that.
You're talking under manufacturer, you're talking both.
Under the processors, you know, the manufacturing.
And testing, I mean, I, you know, I mean, I think testing mostly happens remotely and, but
Yeah, and that's state law, we can't fix that one, but my, my understanding was that they could do it all on the same site.
Yeah, well, we, we need to change this draft.
Doors, there's a lock
Yeah.
Establishments, only certain personnel are allowed through that locked door.
Yeah.
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 Now, the one thing I, and I didn't see it in here, the one thing I was wondering is the blueprint to the fire department of the building.
In the license.
That's in the license, okay.
Yeah, it does, yeah.
I would I would agree with Betty, though. I think you, you ought to put the commercial into that, number two of medical manufacturing facilities should be
Yeah.
Both of them together, what I think.
What do they need to be? Do they need to be in both categories then, or does it just need to be in commercial?
I think both make sense.
What would be the reasoning to?
I guess I see.
There's, I mean, there's no reason not to, I Yeah, what, so Drew, is, is there a reason you put general industrial in there? Well, probably because they're, they tend to be big, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know we did commercials all the way in the county, that's one thing, there still is something to keeping stuff on major highway, some stuff that
Yeah.
Yeah. That was our fault.
Yeah. But I, but, but I think that, you know, general industrial areas would be a good home for, you know, a facility that did cultivation as well as, you know, manufacturing and
Well, cul, does cultivation have to be in general industrial too then?
General industrial or
The cultivation.
Yeah.
So you got to get rezoned, even if you're gonna grow it.
Yeah.
So right, right now, though, you're saying that there, I, and I haven't looked at a map, so I'm going to take your word for it on the general industrial. There's only a few spots.
Well, there would be in the county, they're just not
There's many general Places, but they're just not very many.
They're like, they, to me, they look like, two of them look like a quarter section, and then the third one's a little bigger than a quarter.
So they're big areas, they're just not, just not very many of them, is what you're saying.
We have big areas like that for general industrial? What would that be? Rural water plant?
I was trying to think this out.
Well, I got the rural water plant.
Lewis and Clark.
Lewis and Clark.
Alfalfa mills.
What's that?
The alfalfa mills, like a Meckling.
Their egg. Are they commercial? They'd be commercial if anything.
Commercial, yeah, there's part of it's commercial and part of
I went directly to the map.
Because I was, when you said that, I never
Look really hard, Phyllis, to see this map.
Yeah. Well, yeah. It's on the website.
That's commercial, but really shouldn't be.
Well, it used to be a furniture business.
Yeah, like in the seventies, somebody told me.
Early nineties.
Yeah. And then out here on Highway fifty.
Oh, we just did that.
It's commercial, right? Or is that?
Yeah. So there isn't a lot.
No, but with any of these, we're gonna have to rezone them.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, so it's really
Yeah.
So I guess it really doesn't really matter that if you got a results.
Well, they're conditional use permits already. But if, it, it, it makes it a lot easier, I think, if, you know, we have, I mean, part of it is, right, when, before people buy land, right? They look like, where would be, we, we be allowed to put this? I mean, no, you know, so if, if we want to allow the industry in this county, and I, I, I think we should, then, you know, we're, we're, we're being, we're being pretty, pretty restrictive, I'd say. Is there, I mean, what, what's the rationale behind not allowing it on agricultural land?
Keep it up on the highways, so we don't have growth. That was something with
Microphone. Yeah. So C one would allow that.
The, the other thing is, this product doesn't fall under the Department of Ag.
Right.
So it can't be under agriculture.
I understand that.
I mean, that's the, yeah, until the Department of Health turns it over to the Department of Ag.
I would assume if they have to be zoned commercially, there's going to be a lot less chances of these guerrilla grows and people not getting their license through the state and going ahead and growing.
Yeah, that, that is absolutely forbidden, you know, in the ordinance, you can't, you can't, you can't do that.
And also along the highways, there's, they have to have like internet connection.
Yeah.
Stuff like water, you're not going to have that in a, it's getting a lot better, but in just be on a gravel road, you just might not have that.
So like even just the power that we need to power such a building, almost two thousand amps a minute sometimes, I mean, that's a lot, that's a huge bulk.
So you want to be close to three phase?
Oh, yes.
So I guess I would agree, let's just change that one there, and number two, we're a manufacturing, commercial, that is a better opportunity.
Yeah.
I don't think it's going to be a deal breaker.
So how do we decide which ones, because we're going to list them in both or just one? We're just going to list it in commercial and take it out of general?
No.
Yeah, I think what we can do is just, is just
But how do you decide which one it should be in then?
Well, right now, we've got
No, I know, but if we put it in both.
Well, the location will decide.
Location.
Along the major highway corridors is going to have to be industrial.
Right.
And if it's along the Bay County, we're likely
Oh, I thought we were I thought along pay, any paved road in the county was where it had to be.
Yeah.
But it's got to be along the major corridor, or if it's gonna be a major corridor. They keep gravatory towards each other. So if it's on, just say Highway nineteen.
Yeah.
Major corridor.
Yeah.
That would be a general industrial then? Okay.
So for both of them, should we add commercial for one and two?
Yeah, yeah, we, we could just condense that into one sentence that restricts, you know, testing, manufacturing, dispensaries and cultivation all to C one and I two.
In the license on the, on that blueprint for the fire departments, how do, how do you determine who, which fire department's getting it? Because like John would have to be Wakanda. Are we just going to send it to the primary or do we?
I, I literally have no
Okay. I think that might be simpler if we send it to the primary responder, that would eliminate, because otherwise you could get seven different fire departments
Oh, yeah.
Responding possibly. Yeah.
So yeah, for the first reading of this, second reading next week, Thursday again.
Yeah, because that wasn't a major amendment, right?
No.
My, my were just farm style too, and this is a part.
Yeah, you got to more of that, yeah.
I did have one question, at least, or more, but on the application process, the total blocking out of confirmation of employee background or
That's the license, we're on the zoning ordinance still.
Yeah.
So what, say what?
That's the license.
We're on the other, the other half yet.
In the future, I'll put on the top of it license.
Yeah.
I, I haven't scared at this for six months ago.
I guess I thought it all together, I mean, seriously.
Yeah.
When I started looking, read through it last night, I was playing it all together.
Yeah, I should.
But putting all your fine, it was just I need to read, since two different
Did you have any questions on the zoning ordinance?
I'm thoroughly confused now, so I guess not.
The, the one that says twenty-two dash zero one at the very top.
I don't have anything.
You got
Yeah, that's on the other one.
Okay.
Do we take a motion and a second to move it to second reading?
I move to, move it to the second
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harker.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you.
So the license isn't, isn't on the agenda today?
Not that I see.
Want that next Thursday.
Yeah.
Do you guys have any comments or questions?
On section nine, I think, number, number, under number five, shell has got, the word shell's got a. Space in between shell, S H A L, space L.
Where's it at on section?
Section, uh, section, uh, nine, number five.
Actually, there, they may even be ones, that second one is one.
The second one's a one?
I mean, it's no big deal.
It's S H A L, space number one. Yeah, I was like.
In between doing this, I got a new computer and Microsoft Word is getting even worse now. I gotta copy and paste this out of one document into Notepad and back into another document, stop it for reformatting on.
So it is the operator here, is what you're telling me?
There's an, there's an element to it, my hands on the keyboard.
I couldn't even print it before batting.
So both of you are.
So, so instead of Microsoft Word, it's Microsoft worse?
So the license, we'll come back to license.
Yeah, I, so, so I was gonna, unlicensing, um, site, there's a, at the very beginning, I think it's page two, A and B. Consider, uh, they provide for conditional use permits, um, for testing facilities only in general industrial and so on, so that'll, that'll have to be changed to conform to the change we made today. The other thing, and, and I, I, I realize this is a small thing, but it kind of bugged me. There is, uh, uh, the county commission finds that medical cannabis establishments become targets of opportunity for theft and violent crime. I don't think there's real evidence for that, and I would rather not have that in an ordinance. Yeah, I, you know, I, I just don't see evidence for it, uh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, and then the, the other thing that, that I think would be worth us discussing is, if, there's a section that says if a license is denied. Because the maximum number of licenses have already been given, um, then the, you know, then you have to go back to the, what happens when a license is denied, which is that you have to wait twelve more months to refile. And it seems to me that that's kind of an injustice to people whose licenses are denied, so if you apply for something and somebody else is just ahead of you in line, and they, they get the license and you don't. You're, you, you can't reapply for twelve months, so we need to make an exception there, um, you know, that if somebody's license is denied, they can, you know, uh, because of maximum number of licenses. Right, uh, that, that they can reapply at any time.
But if we.
Yeah, we could do that.
Especially if this wasn't on the agenda, that's probably.
Yeah.
Oh, it's, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but, but I, but, but anyway, that, that would be something, I think we need, I need, I think we need some wording changes there.
But if, no, no. Let's definitely go through that.
Okay.
But they, they can't be denied if they can't apply, and then they can't apply if they have license, number of licenses, so they wouldn't be denied.
That's a good point.
Cause they can't even apply.
Well, I, I guess I, yeah. But, no, but I, I like the idea of putting some discretion in there, only because it, it certainly is possible that two people apply, one person is first in line, and the second person is rejected because.
But they wouldn't be rejected, though.
Well, what would happen?
They just can't apply. They just wouldn't be able to apply. I mean, we wouldn't take their hundred dollars.
Yeah, good, good, I like that, I like that.
I mean, cause we wouldn't take their hundred dollars and be like, oh, we're out of licenses, sorry, but we're gonna keep your money. They just wouldn't be able to apply.
Yeah, yeah, what other communities have done, um, is they've had, I know Sioux Falls had a lottery. Because they had so many applications the first day, um, I, I don't know if we, yeah, so I, I don't know if we wanted to, to work that i- i- into the ordinance in some way, that if. An overabundance of people apply at the same time, we, that, that, uh, you know, we, we would have a lottery system for, um, deciding which applications to consider. Uh, you know, I don't think it's gonna happen here, but if it did, we would have no place to go, um, except I suppose the order in which people, people had applied.
Or we could amend it.
Yeah, we might have.
Well, you'd have to do the, as they come in, just like we do with every other application.
Yeah.
You know, like building permits.
Yeah, I, I think Sioux Falls just had a basket on day one.
They kept all their money too. Okay, Lane, resolution twenty-two-two dash eleven for disaster declaration.
Okay, um, as you all probably remember, on May twelfth. Um, there was a pretty good one storm that came through the county. Just think that we need to de- declare a disaster for it. I don't know that we're going to qualify for any assistance from FEMA through it. Currently, the county threshold for damage, um, it's based on a per capita thing, so the state had us listed fourteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven people for the county. I think the twenty-twenty census number is slightly less than that, um, so I don't know where the discretion comes from. But at four dollars and ten cents a person, it comes out to sixty-one thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy cents that we have to hit. May twelfth, uh, Clay Union Electric lost seventeen poles, that's the major damage that the county received, um, that'd be thirty-four thousand. Clay County itself, um, we lost the roof on the salt poop shed, that is insured, so the best that we can do is, uh, claim the deductible, which is five hundred dollars. Uh, the city of Vermillion lost. And I don't know if FEMA is going to qualify this as critical infrastructure, but they lost an eight thousand dollar golf net. Protects homes somewhere out on the course. Uh, and I, again, I don't, I'm not gonna argue the validity with FEMA on it, that's their rules, so, but we'll submit it. East River Electric, uh, they lost one pole in Clay County, and they equated that to fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, in Pleasant Valley Township this morning, lost a, Ronnie called me this morning, they lost a stop sign, two hundred bucks, I have no idea what those are. Rod might know, but he's not on. So, anyway, so the May twelfth thing is, we're sitting in about fifty-seven, seven, so we're a little shy. Where it comes into effect is, we are not hurt if we declare a disaster. Even if we do not qualify, the state can use our totals. In order to get the disaster declaration for others. In this case, on that day, East River is. Close to four million, I think, in lost poles during that storm, so, you know, it. In the, in the whole scheme of things, declaring is a good thing. It'll assist others, even if we don't get the total amounts in, so, um, I guess I would. Have any question, answer any questions if you have them, but it'd be my recommendation that we declare a disaster. There's no downside for, from us, and if the damages do come in higher. It's one less thing we have to scramble to do later on.
And that doesn't include private losses.
It does not. It's only publicly owned infrastructure, you have to get qualified through that before any decision on individual assistance would ever be made.
I certainly would move approval.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that roll call.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes.
Okay, uh, and then just to let you know where we're sitting. Sorry, from Saturday night. Um, which would be another separate event, if it so gets to it.
Sunday night, right?
Sunday night, yes, my days are mixed up, cause of the holiday, yes. East River, I don't know anything yet, Clay Union lost one pole, uh, so it's two thousand dollars, Mike Cruz finally, I shouldn't say that, Mike Cruz got back to me this morning. Pleasant Valley lost another stop sign, um. And Clay County, Rod had some people out, some trees were blocking some county roads somewhere, there's a couple of them. So they're O'Claren Roads, and they'll be, which apparently they're grinding trees and all that today, so there'll be some costs that way. And Rod received hail damage on his truck, so again, it's an insured thing, so carry five hundred dollar deductible, I'm assuming, again.
Yeah.
So, that's where we're sitting so far, I mean, I think we're gonna be stretching it to get in on the twenty-ninth, but the twelfth one might be something we can do, so.
We don't get any more.
Um, Travis asked me this morning, uh, to cancel all the storms. And I would love to do that, because I seem to get blamed for owning the water when it rains, not releasing the faucets when it's dry, so, yeah, feel free to blame it on me, that's fine. Other than that, that's all I got.
So what was the population they had us at for the county?
The, the state had us fourteen nine sixty-seven. And I think the twenty-twenty census is, is like fourteen. Fourteen one hundred-ish, something like that, so I, I don't know where the descrip- it comes out. If we use the actual census numbers instead of the state numbers, it's like fifty-seven, eight or something like that, I mean, we're right on the line, so I don't know what the difference is.
Yeah, so Google is, and that's only as smart as the people putting it in there, but they have us at fourteen nine sixty-seven.
Okay.
But, and that, according to the twenty-twenty census, it says, but.
Okay, so, all right, well, yeah, there's a, there's something they, somewhere, so, but now that this is signed, I'll let the state know, so, uh, future clips will be coming.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Scott.
I have a complaint. Wanted to cut that back further. It would rip on that jump there.
So you didn't care about me? But Dick wants to keep truck.
Yeah. Well, actually, you gotta wait for that to go for quite a while.
I'll be fine.
Yeah. It's been like that for quite a while, and see if it goes back further.
This is one of those spots where, when I run onto something like that, I usually keep taking off the insulation and replace the whole thing.
Yeah, I'm not sure what we're gonna stop at, but I'll find out.
Yeah, over there, stop it over there.
I think it's just around there, but. That piece of insulation going back, that was pretty saturated, so it could be something going on back over here.
Yeah. No, not that, we're gonna talk about it, but if the new system got put in, that would get rid of that, right? Cause it'd be new pipes put in?
No.
No, okay.
Not, it depends which one we went with, if we want that refrigeration system, pipe system.
There'd be a possibility we'd add two more pipes, like.
I didn't know if these old ones got replaced in that or not.
The old ones stay.
So you said add two more, and so you got two more holes.
Yeah, right.
Well, that's old, that's all, iron plate, so.
Yeah, okay, so we've got the four H building, kitchen, HVAC.
So I think everybody's got something from them pertaining to that, uh, just to replace the unit for the kitchen. This is, I think, I don't have my notes for him, I think it's thirty-three hundred bucks, or a little under that, I believe, was the cost, and then you see two other options there. To, to install one unit that would carry the entire facility, right now, there's three units that carry that facility. Two, uh, two furnaces, uh, with condensing coils, evaporating coils, and then the old original furnace in the bigger. So, that eighteen, I think there's a figure for eighteen thousand, only for twenty-four thousand. He looked at a couple different options, when he threw those numbers out, uh, I asked him kind of to speed it up, cause I needed numbers for today. So he's just going based on his twenty years of experience with us and servicing over there, I, I didn't, he didn't really go put a tape measure or anything, and. You know, look over the big scheme of things, so, um, I kinda talked to him about it, he's, he kinda indicated like on that twenty-four, he didn't, I didn't talk to him after I got the, the second proposal from, that. You know, like the twenty-four thousand, that's, that would be the high end, I wouldn't get any higher than that, and then he came back and said, well, I have another idea, and that's when that eighteen thousand dollar number came in.
Oh, I'm missing that too.
I felt, I had it, I had it, I, I think it's in a different place.
Yeah, it got sent out at the last, yeah, last Friday, I believe, I received it, I received it af- after you guys received your packets.
So what's the second request have already, the eighteen thousand?
Yeah, it's just a different proposal from the twenty-four, it'd be a single unit covering the whole facility, yeah, the full four H building.
It doesn't add with the twenty-four thousand?
Yeah, would, that also, that was his first one.
Okay. So he got a little cheaper.
Yeah, and then he rethought things, so well, I have a different idea, and he shot a new proposal, and that's where the, that eighteen thousand came in, so I would say you're somewhere between. To carry that, you know, it's gonna be somewhere between that eighteen to twenty-four, like I said, he hasn't looked at it, put a tape measure or anything. Yeah, I don't think it would go past that twenty-four, I think he's gonna stick pretty close to his numbers.
So, so I'd assume that, that, uh, the eighteen is actually probably s- simpler, a simpler design that.
I don't know how he trimmed it.
A lot of times, when, when it goes, when it goes cheaper, it's because it's, it's simpler, I like that.
Right.
It's simple, you know, the kiss.
Well, he, he knows we're all about simple, and I have talked, I said, you know, and that's why we're running into the problem now, we're there, because that furnace isn't simple.
Yeah.
And the wholesale cost on electric motors fifteen hundred bucks.
Yeah.
And they put a new motor in, put a new board in, and it still doesn't work.
So I think that's, that's the real question today, we, the thirty-two hundred dollar and thirty-five, thirty-two hundred and seventy-five dollar one is the one that has to be done, that's just the kitchen. Yeah, and that's the only one that has to be done.
Right.
I had Scott look, look into the rest of it, um, just to see what it would cost to put it on one system, try and simplify it and upgrade. So I mean, we don't have to spend.
Right.
The other twenty thou- though.
But it does look as if, that we'd whip the whole, whole banana, that the increase in efficient, efficiency for the whole building would probably pay for itself in five years or eight years.
But I mean, if we wanted, we could.
Using the calculator.
If we said, yeah, we wanna do that, maybe Sam can get us a more accurate number.
Right.
Because it looks like the other, the other furnaces that are, that would be left there, if we just replace the ones, are pretty old.
Yeah, it's like forty, forty years old, sixty percent efficiency, that's a really bad efficiency rating.
But they're old.
But I mean, if we're wondering about what that exact price and what we're actually gonna get, cause I can't find that eighteen thousand dollar one either.
I personally, I, I guess I would just assume, having checked more into this eighteen thousand dollars, replace the whole thing, because I think in the long run, we're better off.
Yeah, definitely.
So as long as we can afford it, it is that like the point, yeah.
I just didn't know. We're getting our back against the wall, four H days coming, and you ain't got, don't have AC in your kitchen, and no, I don't know if this.
Well, ask Sam about that.
If we need to expedite this, so.
Well, will you know by next Thursday?
I can get on the horn with him and find out, yep. See if he's comfortable with that, or. What's the next step in the process, might be if he wants to come and look things, maybe he went over there too, and somebody was there and popped in and measured and did a bunch of stuff, I really don't know, I didn't, I didn't converse with him much last Friday.
Or we can agree to just not spend over the twenty-four eight.
Yeah.
And let Scott work out the best deal for us, and just present that to us, and tell, you know, if it's not over the twenty-four eight, he can get going right now.
Yeah.
But if we can get a better deal, that's, I mean, if he's come up with a.
There was a little, I asked him before he, before he came up with the eighteen, that, hey, can you get, can you get a thermostat in there? I don't get crazy on technology, but something that can be monitored from a computer screen, cause that, that technology's out there, installed, it says that, and it's pretty slick, and. It's really kinda helpful, at the end of the day, if you can kinda be here and wanna look out there and see what's going on, yada, 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 so.
Yeah, I've had that on my house.
Yeah, everybody, everybody has nowadays.
Yeah, and it, it looks like the, um, efficiency of the, the eighteen thousand eight hundred dollar one is like ninety-five percent.
Yeah.
That's a.
Yeah, I think, uh, the, that motion that Scott or the Travis had, uh, had suggested not over anything, not to exceed, uh. Twenty-four thousand eight hundred dollars was a sensible one, I. Not to exceed uh twenty four thousand eight hundred dollars was a sensible one. I make that motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? The only thing I'm wondering is in that big room, like in the winter time. I think they use it like two days a week, but they usually turn the thermostat down and then they have, then they kick it on when somebody's gonna show up. Is, can that get set automatically?
I believe uh I've read through his proposals that um. The individual spaces would be, there'd be a damper in there.
But I was just wanting, you know.
Then they can, you can control each individual space.
Okay.
So they're just not running on one set point at that thermostat.
Okay, cause.
The thermostat for the big room would run a damper up in the ductwork.
Because what they do is somebody at the end of the meeting, they'll turn that down to like fifty degrees. Well, then they forget to turn it on. For Sunday shooting sports, cause nobody's there since Friday.
Yeah, see, that can all be scheduled and those fancy.
That's what I was wondering, okay.
Run it from your cell phone.
Yeah.
And uh automatically, you can trigger it. You can have it so it automatically triggers on on timers. You can also have it still on certain days of the week, it'll trigger when that activity's gonna be in there. Or you can override that that by just dialing in on your cell cell phone.
But, you know, Scott or. Will be the one to have that and they're probably not gonna be the ones that are using that room at that time. That's, and I don't wanna give everybody an access to that.
No.
That's gonna be using that room. So I was just wondering if we could just, cause they'll know in in the winter time, shooting sports or every Sunday at noon.
Sure.
This thing kicks on at ten, warms it up and it's ready to go.
Yeah, I mean, they.
Cost that much to have some false positives from time to time, you know, to have it warm it up even though. On that particular Sunday.
Yep.
It's Christmas, they're not gonna be there at that time. That's, that's not a, we wouldn't be burning a lot of extra energy to do that.
No, but as long as it can be done, that's all I was wondering.
Yeah.
Yeah, the the um I I'm looking at that eighteen thousand eight hundred dollar proposal. Do we, do we need to act to accept the proposal? Um it's valid through July twenty four and it requires a signature.
That's kinda standard on all their forms.
But July twenty four, right? That's a month and a half away, six, seven weeks. But we're gonna, well, if you guys agreed.
Yeah.
Just not go over the twenty four eight and try and get the best deal for that room.
Okay.
And then we can finalize, I mean, you'll figure it out and we'll finalize it next Thursday, I suppose.
And you know, the 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 new furnace are probably going along those. Storage rooms to the east. That's probably where that is gonna be a larger unit. So.
So that's move stuff in there, have to get moved somewhere else.
You know, that hasn't been worked out yet. That's where it's gonna go and I definitely don't want the old units tore out. I don't know if that, I don't think that was part of his bid, but I can tear a unit out pretty quick. I'm good at tearing out.
It's easy.
Yeah.
Don't have to remember where the bolts go.
Yeah, like that part of my career started at about age five. But my dad didn't care for it a lot of the time.
Yeah. So get a motion. Did you make the motion? Yeah, oh, you did, I'm sorry. So we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Yeah, she was shaking her head. Uh hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manny.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Oh, and I lost my agenda. What's the next thing?
Laboratory.
Oh, Wick office restroom, okay.
So um. Looking to get in that uh wall and lab replaced up in Wick bathroom. There's basically zero water pressure that comes up there. Um so I was looking at that and get to look, got to looking down here at the amount of exposed cast iron and galvanized wire lines. I said, well, we're doing that and got a bore holes through floor. We should take this other stuff out. I don't know how many feet of it is down here, but uh long story short, you know. I believe it's forty five hundred, is that what's on there? Um reached out to. Five different plumbers and heard back from one. So that's kind of a tough. Tough road to hoe in Vermillion anymore here, but so that's the number I got back from the one gentleman. Um so that's kinda what we're looking at. Like, that's gonna get a brand new lab up there. There won't be galvanized wire lines be eliminated. The cast iron or galvanized drain lines in the wall be eliminated. So it'll be all updated to copper or PEX, probably PEX.
I guess I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? When you're looking for plumbers, are you going outside of city of Vermillion?
Yeah, I went to Sioux Falls, I went to Yankton.
Yep.
And I think I'd call like thirty, forty days earlier when I first got here, might have had a chance, but. By the time I got reached out to them, they're all getting fired up for their construction season. So it's, I want guy in Sioux Falls, I wish you would have called me two months ago. Iron Yankton. So a little behind the eight ball on that one.
Anything else? Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manny.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, motion passes. HVAC.
So uh. Believe the uh commissioners here tasked uh myself and Sam Johnson and Marty Gilson was. Looking over this HVAC product, product, project and uh coming back with a recommendation we thought. So look things over, had a couple meetings and a long story short, uh we just determined that probably what. Um and I believe Ryan's on this call, so he can chime in. Um. I don't, I think it was proposal, I can't remember which one the proposal it was, but it's what they call the four pipe system. Um water. So basically, that's what you have here. The fan coil units get replaced. It has dual coils. Was a hot water coil and the other one's a cooling coil. And it would require, as you all said earlier, another set of pipes. Cause these pipes that are here now would be used to transfer, transport the chilled water. And the other set of pipes would be for the hot water coil. Um we thought that would be the the best option. For for the courthouse. Um we looked at the other one first and I was kinda all on fire about it. Like got to talking to people and researched it and kinda find out what the um. The maintenance of those requires quite a bit more maintenance, probably more technical maintenance. So we just decided that that water system was the best way to go. Um there was talk about whether we phase it in, do we put the fan coil units in with a hot water coil and a. In the, in the, or do we put, do we put a fan coil unit in? To use this original two pipe system, but have a, but spend the extra money to have a second coil in there. For chilled water, if we got to the point, if if the two pipe system would not maintain the building the way we wanted it. Taking care of the hot and the cold areas. There's some talk back and forth, well. If we get the new fan coil units in, we get the better technology with the zoning valves and the, and the. And the valves right at the, right at the fan coil units, they're actually shutting the water off versus just a fan. Is that gonna reduce the number of hot and cold spots in the building? And um. So. There was talk about that and I was just in camp, you know, if we're gonna do it. Let's just do it once, let's make the holes, let's run the pipe, let's not go back, disrupt people, disrupt lives. To run a second set of pipes, but get down two years down the road and find out that whole two pipe thing isn't working. Like we thought it was. So that's kinda where we're at on that. Um Ryan made the suggestion that um. Uh to make an amendment to that. To have that in writing and within that whole bid process. Uh as an option to to put the two pipe system in in case we go over budget. And then so you don't have to restart the whole bidding process again. And then we talked about the E R Vs. And determine that. The best, best option there is what they talked about, putting the RV on the roof of the garage out here. Uh feeding as many as these rooms as possible. Um I think that's pretty important. And the only other, the only thing we talked about that was kinda outside that whole project. Um from the engineers in Sioux Falls was to do some updating on the unit that feeds the courtroom. To put, to put a uh to replace that. With either a unit that has a coil in it, a hot water coil and a chilled coil in it. Or if we're gonna stay D X or direct expansion up there, like closer now. But the design is such a way that that room is getting us. A lot of fresh air from the outside because on the times in the day and the times it's really used, heavily used, you got a lot of people in there. It'd be a bonus and it'd also be a bonus this building just to bring an extra fresh air. And Ryan thought that was a good idea and he was gonna look. Look into that a little bit more. So that's kinda where we're at. Oh, Brian, are you on there? Oh, there he is. So yeah, that's what we talked about.
So what is this price that we're? What what's that whole price gonna cost us to do?
I'm pulling up my revised cost estimate. And the numbers in here. What I did is I, you can all hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay. Um what I did is I. Maybe this sounds funny, but I'll describe it. So I didn't wanna redo all of my other cost estimates, so I. I made these so that they line up with the other ones in a, in a relative fashion. I think all of them need to be inflated just for our current. Bidding situation and and all of that, but this at least. Put them in line so you can compare them apples to apples to the other options. So. Like if we look at. Let's see, three options, are are you all looking at that cost estimate with the, it has a couple of lines highlighted in gray?
Yep.
Um option three B. That one, let's see. Yeah, that's the one that has it split up like Scott was describing where base bid would be basically just new fan coil units. With the ability to add another set of pipes later. Um that would be base bid and then the alternate would be to actually put in that piping as part of the project. So like that one, that's. You know, six hundred and twenty to seven hundred and forty thousand, that would be. Just for that HVAC part, then you you have to add the other, you know, the boiler replacement, the ventilation upgrades. General work, fire protection. And then some of those other were optional fire alarm system upgrade, electrical distribution upgrading. It add all those together and then you have to inflate them, whatever we wanna guess that is for uh. The current situation.
So so a million dollars?
Yeah, it's gonna be.
I've got between one point four fifty two and one point six sixty eight.
Are you adding everything though, Phyllis?
No, I was adding on the one, one point four five, I was adding the. The dual request or the alternate and then. Well, was the. What the first item, the second item, we'll make it that way a little easier, the general work. Fire protection, I'd put in the one sixty. Fire alarm system. I had a question mark on the telecommunication cable. Are we, have we done any of that or is that still yet to be done? What?
Still yet to be done.
Okay, I have not added that.
Yeah, I I just added up the high number of of them all and yeah, it's definitely over a million um. Depending on what which of those options you take, but then we would also have to. Yeah, I don't know if it, if it's thirty percent, forty percent more for for the current situation with bidding in that. Would have to be added on top of that. Um last time we met officially, you know, there, there was actually a decision made um. About using that other system. Uh this one, just as a comparison. Would be that one, the high end was six hundred and fifteen thousand, just that, that one piece of the, the entire system. And now I'm saying. In in the same, you know, to apples to apples to that, this one's seven hundred and forty. Uh if you include the adding the second set of pipes, so if you take seven forty minus six fifteen. So it's, it's basically a hundred and twenty five thousand more than what, when we talked about this last time a few months ago. But if you were to. To not put in that second set of piping, then it, then it's actually less than the, the system that we decided last time.
Uh Ryan, uh under the fire alarm system or beyond that, it says if no fire protection sprinkler system is installed. Is a fire alarm system included in uh say the fire protection sprinkler system?
Yes, the, the two numbers, the one sixty and the two oh five that are the fire protection sprinkler system. Including required fire alarm, there, there would be a, a fire alarm system in with that. But then if you decided not to put in a fire sprinkler system, you, you could still upgrade your fire alarm system. For that uh forty to forty eight thousand.
It's funny when you say upgrade.
Yeah. In in provider install.
Yes.
Well, initially I had, I had uh two checks, the hundred and sixty thousand and the forty eight thousand. That's why I needed that clarification. So you don't really need the forty eight K if you, if you have fire protection system number one.
Correct, yeah, cause we have that fire alarm, the type of fire alarm that you would need if you have a sprinkler system. We have that in that number.
Right.
And again, these are not inflated yet, so.
The other question was on the LED lighting. We've replaced most of, haven't we?
Correct, so we don't need much of that or any, we're not gonna do any of that.
Okay, yeah, that was a, an optional thing.
So if I get this correct, we're doing this, we, right now, we're thinking about doing the seven forty. And then the hundred and twenty five for the general work allowance, fire protection for a hundred and sixty thousand. And replace the telecommunications cabling fifty six thousand. And I don't know about electrical distribution gear replacement.
Yep, that needs to be done.
Okay, so that's another eighty eight, right?
Yep.
Wow.
And then also the boilers.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta go to the top. The high end on everything that we're talking about is one point four 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 million.
That's what I was getting at, what's bottom.
Yeah.
Not the bottom one.
And you're saying those numbers aren't inflated yet, right, Ryan?
Correct. I'm gonna add those up as well, just to make sure we're on the same page. One point four 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 million, yep. And I mean, just, just to give it a, let's say it's a forty percent more, you know, then we're talking over two.
And Carrie, what did we have? That money that we had?
We've got building fund and ARPA.
Yeah.
So what's in the building fund and what's in ARPA?
Um. Three point seven was what we were getting from ARPA. And building fund. I gotta look that up.
Was it three point seven or two point seven from ARPA?
I thought it was two point seven.
Two point seven, sorry.
Yeah, I liked it.
Point seven. And then. The building money we had. About eight hundred thousand.
Have we spent any of this, of the two point seven yet? Have we, I mean, I think we haven't spent yet, but we have sent any money to that.
Technically, we are spending that for salaries and wages.
Yeah, I understand.
But when it comes back.
But the money comes back, but I mean, we actually have, okay.
Um, and actually to correct myself here, it looks like, um, once we install the camera system and stuff, um. About five hundred and seventy-five thousand, I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong thing here. We've already spent some and then.
Well, we did the roof and the tuck pointing and then the cameras.
Yeah, so we've got about five hundred and seventy-five thousand left of that million.
Yeah, and then, you know, everything Scott's been doing. Phyllis can hear, everything Scott's been doing has been coming out of the building fund too.
And I haven't, I haven't individually told that yet, so.
What about this out there at the four H building?
Well, that hasn't been added in here yet either, but that'll come out of there. Yeah, yeah, but that's twenty-one.
Yeah.
Somewhere in there. Compared to this, yeah.
Yeah, you know, ARPA's been our golden opportunity to, you know, bring facilities up to. Where they, where they should be and, uh, you know, I think especially for employees who spend all their time here. And for the long-term future of the building, it, it makes sense to do it. Um, and, and we're just lucky that there's some capital money available to us now to do it. I mean, this is, it doesn't happen very often.
Well, eight years I've been out here, I've never seen it happen, so I don't think it's.
It really doesn't happen in government.
I hope it never happens again.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There is some pluses to the inside, yes.
Well, you put it out to bid?
I think so.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, put it out to bid.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. That is the next step, correct, Ryan?
The next step would be. To just approve the direction that we're going with the design, which would be this, this four pipe fan coil system. And then.
With a two point, two pipe option, correct?
With, with the two pipe option, yes. Uh, and then, uh, we would put together a, a design fee proposal. Um, and have you guys approve that and then we would, we would complete the design and then put it out for bid. So, yeah, just so there's an understanding, it, it has not been designed yet. It's a concept. Of, we had, you know, four different options, um, if you include three A and three B. That are, have been evaluated and presented, so that, that's all the farther we are with it. It's a study phase at this point.
So what, what kind of a motion do you need then to move forward with the design?
A motion to move forward with the, the scope as defined, uh, that, that we just went through, just to recap, at the, the boiler, the ventilation system. Option three B, which is the four, four pipe fan coil with the two pipe option. General work. The, the, the lower cost of the two fire sprinkler and fire alarm. That would be the one hundred and sixty thousand. The telecommunication cabling, electrical gear. Uh, with that scope, that would, that we should move forward with that. Into design.
So can I get? An amendment to the motion or however you want to do it, resend your motion from before?
I'll resend my motion and say what Ryan just got done saying. So I'm not gonna repeat the whole thing. I do have a question though, what is the, does not the cost, your cost? That comes into this for designing and everything, that's gonna be on top of all this, correct?
Yes, um, and it'll be, in my office, we do the mechanical and electrical engineering. And then we're gonna be teamed up with JLG architects and they'll also be assisting with. Uh, putting the bid documents together and all things like. If we need some soffits made or, um, that they'll, they'll also have a structural engineer under them. For where we cut holes in the floor or the walls. So you, you would actually be getting that, that fee from JLG cuz we'll be a, actually a sub, a consultant to them.
So then if they just added like design fees into the motion.
Right. So do you have an idea possibly, I know you can't give me a exact number, but you mean, but you have an idea what your cost is? What that cost would be?
It's gonna be a percentage correct of the total project?
You know, that's usually how we, how we figure it now.
It's, it's usually five, well, I'm not gonna speak for you, but when we were doing the courthouse. Doing that project, it was five percent of whatever the total project was gonna be, so is that roughly what you think?
Roughly, yeah, um, and then, I, I guess I'll ask you right now, do you guys prefer to have a, a fixed fee? Or, or do you wanna set it up as a percentage like that where after the thing is bid, then, then we know what the fee actually is, it's. You know, five percent or six percent, whatever of the, the bid. Um, it, it seems like usually with government entities, they, they prefer to have just a fixed fee. Like this is just what it is and if the bids are a little higher, a little low, it's, it's the same. Is it, I see some heads nodding, is that what you prefer? So it, it may be that we still determine it based on a percentage of an estimate, you know, early on. Uh, but, but you wouldn't necessarily even see what that percentage is, it would, it would just be a lump, lump sum.
Yeah, I, I think it's in our best interest to probably, to proceed that way.
With the, the fixed, uh, lump sum, okay, yeah.
So I have to amend my motion then?
Well, um, at this point, I, I don't think, I don't think you wanna have anything about the fee in there cuz we're just defining the scope. Um, and, and one of the reasons are, we're kind of doing step by step here is cuz it. Our fee will be different depending on which options you take here. That's why we, we haven't really spent any time determining what that fee should be because, you know, we, we weren't sure what. System we were going with.
I have a question, do we get the review, look at the specs before it's let for bids?
Sure.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, uh, there'll be, there'll be several points along design where we will give you, um. Documents that are partially done. And, and we can do a, a video call like this to go over them, uh, make sure we're on the same page with it all. I'll be coming to the site a couple more times to look around and. Um, and then as far as the, the bids, I mean, when you receive the bids, that, that'll be your normal process where. You can review them and if it's within budget. I, I assume at the next meeting you would both to move forward with it.
So I have a motion. But I don't have a second yet. A motion in a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Anything else for us, Ryan?
No, uh, what I'll do is I'll just start talking to, to JLG and structural engineer and that, we'll get the. Design fee put together and present that to you. Uh, I, I assume you have a next meeting in a month.
Well, we meet next Thursday and we meet the last Tuesday of the month.
Okay.
Normally it's first, second and last Tuesday of the month.
So that would, next Thursday is the ninth?
Yep.
So ninth or the twenty-eighth? Okay, and when would it need to be on the agenda for the ninth?
By Wednesday morning.
This Wednesday?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, next Wednesday, not tomorrow.
Okay, the, just the day before.
Yeah, we gotta have twenty-four hours notice.
Okay. We'll try to, we'll try to have it ready for that one, just so we can move forward.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, thanks a lot, everyone.
Thank you.
Yep, take care.
Let's see, is Larry on? Gonna come?
I know Rod had that email update that I included in your packet. It's like, I don't know that Larry was gonna sign on.
Okay, so we've got the stripe, the rumble strip contract. And that's what the joint powers financial and maintenance agreement is, correct?
Yeah, and pavement marking. And it's a hundred percent federal.
Yeah. Hundred percent eligible.
So I would make a motion to approve.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Um, I guess we all know the hoop shed is, they lost the roof. I don't know when they're gonna get it replaced, so.
But it may be a while before the adjuster even gets out here because of all the light spread storm damage. And so since it wasn't like an emergency type of thing. They said it could be a while before it's here, so. I don't know what they've got stored in there right now.
Cuz that's what that building is for, isn't it?
Yeah, but we don't have to wait for the adjuster, do we? I mean, it's gone. They just gotta take pictures, so I mean, hopefully they start ordering the new building or the new roof. Structure, I mean. We can't wait for them, I mean, that'd be no different than if it was a roof on the house.
Yeah, we probably can and should get an estimate of what it could cost to fix that. We need a motion to do that.
No, Rod can just, he'll just handle that, but he must be on vacation, I'm assuming?
Yes.
So if you wanna, whenever he gets back here, if you wanna tell him to just get a bid for the roof.
It looks like, um, from this Rod Polly's memo, the insurance adjuster looked at the hoop shed and is working with Sue Steele.
Okay.
Yeah. So.
Okay.
And I don't know what structure fourteen dash zero dash one five zero dash zero zero six is.
That's the landing bridge.
Oh. I know he said they were working on it. That is not his, and his email, I think he said that they were working on it, they started doing the work on it, I think that's all he was trying to tell.
Yeah, he just wanted.
Which bridges are they starting? Oh, Landin, oh, okay. I thought you said landing, that's like landing bridge, but. Yeah.
No, he just wanted you guys to know that they started work on it.
Okay, ditch board, take a motion.
Into ditch board.
Second.
Motion a second, vocal.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, we're in ditch board, acceptance of bid for tree removal on the Yankee Clay Ditch.
Looks like we only got one bid.
Is there money?
Yeah, well, that was the.
In the account, I mean, that's the.
That was the question that we had, that we waited. Yep. So that was the question, I think we talked to three, somebody talked to three D digging about it.
And they were all right with?
I guess, well, we were gonna have the money by then anyway, by the time they do the work, so.
I think Rod talked. I remember going about the money.
Yeah.
We ran into that once, a long time ago, wasn't good.
Cuz it looks like we have twenty-nine in there right now and we collect another eleven.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
So we'd be okay by the time they would be willing us.
Yeah. Yeah, what I went by is, uh. What we had in there, the tax collections that we've gotten so far to date. And then I just subtracted what we're supposed to get. What we've already got and we should get about a lot more.
So we'd be okay.
Everybody pays their taxes, we will.
Yes.
So that collects twenty-two thousand a year, huh?
I think so.
Okay.
Twenty-six, something like that.
Barring this work, we're in brilliant, we're in good shape. I would move, there'll be. Set that on bid.
Except three D digging?
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Move, motion to come on a ditch board?
So move.
Second. I have a motion in a second, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, we're in regular session. Uh, vouchers and payroll, everybody get to see those?
Yep. Who to approve them?
I've got a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing done, vocal.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash zero seven for fund transfer, and this is, uh. Transfer of funds from the general fund in the amount of nine hundred and seventeen thousand and seventy-one dollars to the highway fund. And fifty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-six to the emergen, emergency management fund as levied for in the twenty-two budget.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Uh, amend resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash zero nine for CCOG joint cooperative agreement with resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash zero, or dash twelve.
We're going to delay that, I haven't gotten the amended language from them yet. So apparently they had some dates wrong in the first resolution, so they're gonna send us a new one.
Uh, let's see, intergovernmental agreement with SDML workers' compensation fund.
It's kind of standard?
Yeah, it's, it's just a tiny change, it's, it's like a little bitty change, but I'll move approval. Second.
Does that change our cost at all?
No.
So we had a motion, correct, cuz Phil seconded it? Uh, any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Reschedule the June seventh meeting for June ninth for the canvas elect, canvas of election.
I'll move approval. Second.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes.
So then that brings the question. Now you just said to Ryan that our last, that our next meeting after that is the end of the month, are we not having one on the fourteenth?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Published some things for the fourteenth.
You did, well, if you did, that's fine, I'm, I forgot, I, I keep thinking this is the first meeting of Tuesday of June, but it's the last day of May.
So, okay, so we'll plan the fourteenth cuz I think he did schedule some ordinances, so.
Okay. If you wanna let him know, also, Ryan?
Yeah, I will.
If they, if they don't get it done on the ninth or for the ninth. Um, and Betty, I apologize, whatever your amendment to the, whatever you wanted to talk about, I forgot.
Oh, oh, yeah, well, I think, uh, yeah, so the only thing I wanted to say is that I, I would propose that, um, we pass a resolution.
There you go.
Um, uh, to, uh, encourage, um, you know, the, the state. Authorizing and funding regional jails and that, uh, we, uh, maybe informally, uh, talk to Turner County. And suggest that they, they do the same. So it'd be just, uh, you know, I, I.
So it'd be just, uh, you know, I'd be glad to even work with Andy on drafting, drafting a resolution if, if that's okay with you, Andy. I, I just think it would make a difference.
I'm currently in discussion with Lincoln and Turner Counties regarding, you know, regional jail and what that might look like, and what our agreement might look like. You know, they're both interested, uh, right now, we're at the point where they are to reach out to their commissions and see if we could put together a meeting, uh, with at least our commission chairs and our sheriffs, and see what that might look like. I can, I can kind of brief you on that meeting if you'd like, or our most recent meeting. If you want to do that now.
Uh, but it's not on the agenda, so we really can't. We'd have to do that at the next one.
Yeah.
You know, you don't need to take any action, but if you want to know where we're at.
Yeah, but I, I think what, um, what we're suggesting is that, um, uh, we all be on record via resolution, uh, that would be sent to, um, the regional jails committee that will meet this summer. And, uh, you know, expressing our support for the concept of, uh, of regional jails and, uh, you know, I, I think if we got into the wherethes, uh, bit of the, uh, you know, the, the issues that we're facing, uh, it, it would, it would help. And this was the opinion of, um, you know, Art Rush, who is a member of that committee, he requested to be on the committee and he's, he's been appointed. Um, and he thinks it would, it would make a difference if counties that were affected formally supported, um, the idea.
So you're saying formally support the idea of funding for regional jails?
Well, formally support the idea of regional jails with state, uh, state funding, yeah.
Sure, because I mean, I, I believe all jails in South Dakota except Fall River County operators regional jails, including ours. Yeah, but what we're looking to do is see if we can get state funding for that purpose.
Yep.
Help us expand our jails.
Exactly. Yeah, so I'd, I'd be glad to work on that resolution and, and, um, you know, maybe put it on the agenda for, for the next meeting if folks are agreeable.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
We need a motion.
No.
No, we should, should we?
Did you want to give an update, Andy?
If, yeah, I mean, I guess I can kind of tell you where the, the three sheriffs are at with it and, and that, um, I think that the, uh, I'll turn my camera on you. Sorry. Well, I guess I'm just trying to find my mouse here, but I, um, I, I met with the sheriffs a few times. We discussed it on the phone and discussed it in other interactions and the, the, the three sheriffs that, um, I believe would be interested in getting together, met, uh, I guess it was a good week or so ago. I met with them both before previously, and that was Turner and Lincoln County. Union County is currently expanding their jail. Uh, it's not going to be expanded to the point where it would absorb other counties inmates, uh, completely. Um, Yankton County has recently expanded their jail, uh, same, same story, but I don't really see them weighing in or signing on to a construction of a new jail. Uh, so meeting with those other counties, um, seemed appropriate, and they agreed. Lincoln County believes that politically, a new jail in their county is some years away before the, they're gonna see that happen. And, um, Turner County is the same, same way. They don't think that they'll build anything soon, although they're interested because of, uh, of the transportation issues. I approached them about the idea of, uh, whether or not they would join us in the debt of, and the cost of constructing a jail and sharing the debt with us. And, and we discussed what an agreement like that might, uh, for that might look like. And then the option of just simply housing with us with some sort of, uh, uh, understanding of the number of beds that, uh, they would consume and what we could provide them. And, um, so we looked at those options. Turner or Lincoln County coming on board with us would, would dramatically change the kind of jail we would build. It would, it would literally triple the size of the jail that we would have here. He did, he did suggest that the jail, and, and throughout the conversation, it, it appeared the jail would be here in Vermillion. A lot of the reason for that being that, uh, the idea we could staff it easier. And in Southern Sioux Falls, they would compete with the Minnehaw County Jail as well as the state penitentiary for, uh, employees that were interested in corrections, uh, besides just all the other employers in, in, in Sioux Falls. We would, we would be challenged as well to, to staff a jail that size. We would at least triple our staffing, which would triple our operating costs. Uh, it would be very expensive endeavor to have a jail that size without a firm commitment, for Lincoln County throughout the, uh, the period of the debt, but then beyond that, uh, we would, we would have to continue to operating a jail that size. I'm not saying that's a bad idea, that's just one of the, one of the problems. Turner County's, uh, jail population really doesn't call for a jail of their own. And, uh, so they, they're in a situation of contracting and transporting. They also don't feel that they can staff a jail in Parker or in Turner County, and, um, that would be a problem for them. We believe that Turner County inmates alone, we can manage in our jail, whether they, uh, share the cost of the debt or just simply, uh, contract for beds like we do now. And, uh, we currently do take Turner County's inmates pursuant to our policy of a 72-hour maximum stay. Uh, we receive all of their incoming inmates now, and, um, and most of them bond out, just like most of our inmates bond out, and those that don't, they move on to other jails within the first day or so. And, um, in that case, if we did have a new jail here and we did have a contractor to take Turner Counties, then we would obviously keep them for the duration. And I think that we can do that with our current plan that we've got. It's got, uh, an idea toward expansion in the short term and in the long term, so I think that we could absorb Turner County's inmates along with our, ours for the, the, at least the duration of the bond and then some. At the end of that time, if they did sign on to the, to the debt like we did with, uh, JDC back in 1995, then, um, by the time that debt was paid, then they could might decide to go their own way or not, and, um, it would just depend on how, how much Sioux Falls expands in Turner County, like we saw happen in Lincoln County. So with that all in mind, they were gonna reach back out to their commissions and see if this is something their commission would want to do. Realistically speaking, we didn't really see Lincoln County joining us with, joining with us in that way. They would have to be able to foresee their inmate populations well into the future, and I don't think they know what that number's gonna be, so we could build enough beds to take them here, or, or conceivably, they could crowd out all of our inmates. Lincoln County alone, and, um, they're also in a situation with Minnehaw County where the next contract with Minnehaw County is supposed to be that they, they either take all their inmates or none, because what Minnehaw County has to have known numbers, so they can continue to, uh, to plan, and so they can't, uh, they, they need to know what Lincoln County's gonna bring them. So they can't bring us some of their inmates. They, it would be all or none with Lincoln County as well, so. Um, that's kind of where we left it. Uh, the ball's in their court right now to reach out to their commissions and see what kind of, uh, interest their commission has. And again, we're not talking about simply, um, them building a jail together with us. Uh, that's one option. The other is just whether or not they would house with us. I think that a, a real realistic scenario is a, is a partnership with Turner County. Uh, Lincoln County's a more of a maybe. Any questions?
Good and thorough, thank you.
What, uh, just for curi- curiosity sake, what's Hutchinson County do?
I think they house in Mitchell or Yankton. I think they're similar to just about everybody that they house where there's beds. And, um, but, uh, Mitchell, Mitchell and, and Yankton are both near them. Bonhom County does have a jail. It's, I think something like ours, much smaller. I've never been in Bonhom's County's jail. But Hudson County has nothing but, uh, holding cell, two, two holding cells, uh, simply used for court when they bring them back for court or, or immediate, or upon arrest. Theirs is new, of course, you know, Hutchinson County, they have a new courthouse and a new sheriff's office and jail.
Thanks, Andy. Uh, let's see, before we go into joint or executive session, joint jurisdiction, we just have a meeting tomorrow night at 7:00 at City Hall, just a reminder. So I think we've got through everything except executive session.
Can I just give a quick update, Travis?
Yeah.
On, after looking at it all, I think we gotta go with the 14, whatever it was, the higher population number.
Okay.
So that puts us in at the 61. Um, I let the state know that we declared, and they are starting reviews today, so they, we should know within a few days anyway. Um, but in the meantime, if you're out in the county and happen to see signs blown over or something, maybe let Rod know, because it's gonna be close and tight, so. Just where, just where we're at, I guess.
Okay, thank you. So I'll take a motion to go into executive session for personnel and contractual matters.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second, roll call.
Okay, so that was Mike and Dick, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Moeller.
Yes, we're in executive. How you going?
Move to come out of the second session.
I have a motion and a second, roll call.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, we're in regular session. Okay, so what, do, do, did we just get the email?
Um, what time did that come in? 11:36, yes.
I thought we were looking, there, somebody was looking for a third party to do that.
Hmm. No, because the mayor runs the city council per the ordinance, and I run the county commissioner per the ordinance. So if we're meeting as joint jurisdiction, we have to run our meetings. We have to run them the way it always is.
What is the request? I could not.
They want them, they want them, a moderator or mediator, whichever way you want to.
A moderator that would not, uh, and the candidates would not include, uh, Travis or, uh, or the mayor. So logical uh, would be either our vice chair or the, uh, president of the council, that is.
Uh, Steve? No, um, Rich Holland.
Yeah, yeah, geez, that'd be okay.
Yeah.
But our ordinance doesn't allow it.
Yeah, so the, what does the ordinance say, um, with respect to chairing the joint jurisdiction? I'm, I'm guessing it's silence.
Si- what do you mean silence?
If they don't understand the reason.
Yeah, it's something we ought to fix if we can't do that.
Right.
If you can't have a. You mean if you can't appoint somebody else to run the meeting?
Yeah.
But why would we do that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think.
It's hard to have, I mean, could we have one meeting with two chairs?
That's what we always do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see where it's a problem myself.
I mean, every joint jurisdiction meeting we have.
Yeah.
I chair the commissioners and the mayor chairs city council.
Correct.
And they essentially act independently.
But I think in this case, we want to actually have a discussion, yeah?
That's what we do at the other meetings, too.
You can still have a discussion, though, if, 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 you know, just start out with the chairs. You know, still have a discussion, I would think. Yeah, we can, uh, start out as, as, uh, she can bring the city council order, Travis can bring the.
Um, please get nearer your mic.
Okay, okay. And try, then, uh, uh, the mayor could bring the city council to order, Travis could bring the commission to order, and then we could, uh, move to suspend the rules and, uh, appoint a, a joint, uh, uh, chair of the, of the combined commissions, so we could have discussion between the two, the, all the assembled mass. And, uh, but that would have to be done, uh, while, while we're in session at that point, as I, and, as I recall, the, the rules. They, they run by, uh, Robert's Rule of Orders, too. She, she pointed that out, uh, at her organizational meeting here just not too long ago.
She pointed it out at that day of the.
Correct, that's it.
Mayor, there.
That's correct.
But what?
That sounds right to me.
What would be the purpose of appointing somebody different?
I guess the only thing I can see the difference with it, it takes both sides out of that, and so everybody's got equal.
Mm-hmm.
Kind of, you know, everybody would be equal there, so like, if you wanted to speak, then we, whoever was in charge of that meeting would point you out. Or if they wanted, or if somebody from the city wanted to speak, that person would do that again. I mean, you just put one person in charge.
Yeah, yeah.
So basically, it could be anybody. Outside of, you know, it could be anybody there.
Put Ted Munster on the spot.
No, but I mean, it could be even anybody that's.
I don't know if Ted say yes.
And be part of the group, it could be anybody that's part of the group.
That's right.
You just put somebody else in charge of the. That way everybody has free, that nobody's actually over the other one.
Yeah, 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 that, that makes sense to me. That makes sense to me.
Yeah.
So, and, and it wouldn't ha- I mean, it wouldn't have to be rich, so Dick, you could, you could certainly do that.
Yeah, anybody can do it.
But whoever it is, we need to let them know in advance of the meeting that they're, they're about to be drafted.
Yeah, it's got 36 hours.
Yeah. Is that, is that something you'd be willing to do, Dick? Because if you would be willing, I, I would be glad to nominate you.
I don't know that I'm well-equipped for that.
There's.
And as vice chair, I, I have a medical procedure the next morning, of which I'm on some drugs, of which I would not be the best person for that position.
So should, should we ask Rich?
What about Steve Ward? There you go, yeah, Steve Ward.
Sure.
What about the city manager?
Well.
Yeah, I hate, that puts him in a tough spot.
Yeah.
I know, but it's gonna put anybody in a tough spot.
Steve, Steve Ward would be great.
But if you're gonna take it out of the mayor and the chairman's hands, you can't have anybody from either board.
Right.
Well, that's true, too. You definitely have somebody from the outside.
Why, why couldn't you have somebody from either board?
Well, because if, if we're gonna appoint somebody from the board, what's the point of removing the mayor and the chairman?
That's true.
Like, yeah.
You immediately have some bias.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right. Um.
I mean, we've already agreed that we're gonna follow their rules for time and everything. I don't know what the problem is, who's going to.
I mean, I know, uh, Fairholme, Matt Fairholme, I know he's on the city planning with Zoney. But I think he could be, one guy that could be not biased one way or the other.
He's already spoke his bias on that in the last meeting, so he's not biased.
I mean, he's been a judge.
No.
Trying to think who else. Yeah, I thi- I think it's hard, though, for somebody who is not a member of either body to direct discussion.
I think we're too late into the game for this meeting to figure out a new.
Rather agree with that.
I mean, if they wanna, if they want to do that for the next time, we have some, because the next time, I mean, if we can get things figured out, the next joint jurisdiction meetings are gonna be together, and they're gonna have to be run by the mayor and the chairman. We're not gonna bring a moderator in every time. I mean, I don't know what they're, we're having a discussion on the problems with joint jurisdiction. Why do we need somebody else that has no idea?
I, I'll just say, as somebody who lived in New England for a lot of years, we always elected a moderator from the floor. But, you know, I mean, it.
For governmental?
Yeah, for government.
Town meetings, annual town meetings.
Well, town meetings, we had them almost every month, but there was always a moderator from the floor. I, I mean, I don't see a problem with nominating somebody from, from the floor.
Yeah, I know you want to stay, but I want to stay away from any kind of biases. Yeah, I know you wanna stay, but I wanna stay away from any kind of biases one way or the other.
Well, I'm, I'm worried more about having a orderly meeting, you know, run by somebody who has some knowledge of the issues.
Biases.
Yeah, and I, I mean, it doesn't sound like the, like the city is very worried about bias either.
Yeah, one of the issues with me is that I, see, I own property in joint jurisdiction. And so I've got a, I've got an extra toe in the water here.
So Steve, Steve Ward?
I mean, that, I don't agree with that, but.
I mean, I used to remember that, under the bus, but, uh.
If, if you're not gonna go with the chairman and the, and the mayor, you can't get somebody off the boards, because somebody is going to be put, could get put in a.
Yeah.
Awkward position.
Yes.
If they wanna, if they're on the board and they will, they don't wanna talk about it, they can just shut you off. Cause this needs to be an open discussion tomorrow night. On the issues that are.
So would John's email, basically, he's asking who we want?
Or if we want.
Did you say if we want?
And I, no.
A suggestion has been offered that a member from one of the two governing bodies who is not currently mayor or chair be selected to run the meeting. The thought was that this would provide more to be joint meeting field versus two bodies meeting at the same time.
Well, then, how come we've never done that before on any others, on any other joint jurisdiction meeting?
Yeah, it'd just be hard to argue that joint jurisdiction meetings have been very functional. I mean, you know, we, we got a problem. We gotta figure out.
Yeah.
And this, this is a piece, this is a piece of the bigger problem.
But I think it's late in the game, is the problem I'm having here, you know? This didn't give us any time to even come up with anything different or even think about it. This is like, I'm sure they just came up with the idea today. I'm not putting anybody down, but I mean, it's like, I don't know how you can change from one thing this short period of time, I guess. And that's, maybe that's something that part of the discussion, how are we gonna move forward?
Yep, yeah, I think it'd be worth, I, I, I think it'd be, definitely be worth making it part of the discussion.
So I guess, I think we go the way we're going now, with the, with the mayor and the chairman, and then that's part of the discussion. That's one of the topics.
Because, and it's never happened, but I could see it maybe happening, like. If one board says, okay, you're out of time, we're not gonna discuss that, another board can go, no, allow it. And then where do you go?
We're, we're already there.
I know, but I mean.
That's the primary, that's the primary need for one moderator rather than two. It's exactly what you're talking about.
Yep.
Yeah.
You've already spoken.
Sorry.
What was that, Phyllis? I missed that.
I said, or they could say you've already spoken on that and cut you off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So is the city keeping to the five minute? What, their rules, or have they put those out there?
Yeah, so we were, we, I agreed to the five minutes per person to speak, and that's, that does not count the board. That, that only constitutes members of the public.
Oh, okay.
And I don't know, I don't know the feeling of everybody else, but if the planning and zoning board members on either side are there. And they have additional questions, shouldn't we allow them extra time? Cause they're gonna need to understand what we're. What we're discussing or what they need to do at their next meetings. I mean, if they had question, I mean, if they've already spoke once and all of a sudden a question comes up, shouldn't they be allowed to? Shouldn't they at least be allowed to ask another question or two? I don't know. And I mean, we can set that out at the beginning, that, you know, everybody gets five minutes, unless you're on the planning and zoning. And you have questions that you need answered. I mean, it's, it's not another opportunity to rail against one side or the other on what they're doing wrong. It's a, it'd be more, they can only ask clarification questions. Or we keep them to the five minutes also and just.
I mean, I guess I don't want to go into the session with the ideas. To me, I wanna resolve problems, not create. And so I, you know what I mean? I really do. I don't, I wanna go in there and see if we could resolve some of these issues that we had. Because it doesn't do us any good going there with the ideas that, well, I'm blaming Sam over here because I don't like how she did things. But I mean, I, I just don't go there. I mean, I, I think we need to be open and with the idea. Now, that doesn't get us back to a moderator here, but.
Yeah, and I, I, I mean, I, I, I think that planning and zoning members may very well have constructive ideas. To which, you know, we, we ought to be listening, so I, I, I would not be in favor of giving them a time limit. I mean, I, I, I don't suspect any of them of trying to, you know, talk for twenty minutes at a time or waste our time. I mean, I think they're all.
Well, and we can.
Hardworking public servants.
We can rail them in, that's easy.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not worried, I, I'm not worried about making all those rules, you know?
No.
But I, but I thi- I, I do agree for the public, um, you know, having, I, I mean, we don't want the whole meeting to, we want the meeting to be a discussion. We, we don't wanna be completely, uh, we don't want people to talk for forty-five minutes.
Right, and if, and only if you have something new to add, you know, we've had meetings in here that, that it turned around and say, first one said the same thing again. We've got that, you know, I'd rather, let's be constructive, if you don't have anything new, I don't really wanna hear it.
Yep.
And, and I think I, I, I exercised that a little bit today.
Yes, that's what I tried to say.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're normally three minutes here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
All right.
I guess I don't have an answer for John, as far as that goes.
I think it, I think that it does require suspension of the rules. And I think that that has to be done in meeting, but boy, it's sure great to have a plan.
Yeah, I, I would personally be favor of suspension of the rules and electing a moderator.
Who is Justin?
What?
Wasn't Justin mentioned as a moderator? Who is that?
No.
Nobody was mentioned.
No.
Okay, then I'm hearing wrong. I, the mics are not doing their job today, it must have been.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm leaning back too much, way too relaxed.
Well, I don't think we had any, it, the only people we had suggested was somebody that was actually on the boards. We don't have anybody from the outside that's suggesting.
Yeah, but I, I, I think there's a reason for that, which is that somebody from the outside would, um, you know, would really not understand the issues well enough to moderate a meeting. I think it really has to be a member, member of the body.
So what is suspending the rules gonna get us? You're, we're suspending Robert's rules of order? Or which rules, which rules are we suspending?
Well, the, there'd be the rules of order, because I don't know that there's anything like that that's, uh, in the, in the Robert's rules. Maybe there is, maybe.
As far as having the two meetings, you mean, or the.
Having, having a joint meeting between two boards with, uh. There's gotta be, really, I think that there's gotta be a means of, of, uh, in melding the boards. Gotta have, uh, some way to preserve the idea of unity of leadership.
But that's, I mean, that's what we do when we have joint jurisdiction meetings currently.
Mm-hmm, we act as two boards, boards happen to be sitting in the same room.
But we're, we act jointly, we have to agree, otherwise some, nothing. Otherwise, nothing passes.
Come in recognizing who's to speak next. And will that be the mayor and Travis? That's where I think some confusion, and I don't know that it really needs to be someone who knows all of the particulars of this. It's more someone who is.
We've never had a problem with calling on who was next, I mean, if that's the issue.
Okay.
I guess I'm trying to think of what issues we're gonna run into that we need a new person.
I think it's just the, you know, the orderly conduct of business. Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not finding anything. So the agenda is the joint agenda, yeah?
Yeah.
Um, so, so it's our agenda and theirs.
And the city has extra items on their agenda, so. But yeah.
And we could, but, but it's on, so it's been posted, so we can all discuss items of both agendas, yeah?
We have a dual agenda, right?
Actually posted ours yet, but I will today.
Yep, okay, so, so we should get on our agenda, what's on their agenda, so that we're, we're also covered.
Yeah, John's, John's message this morning actually says, I visited the mayor this morning, attached to the city council agenda for Wednesday evening. The city's agenda combines the county agenda, as we said earlier.
Yeah.
Uh, with the other items the city had proposed for discussion. A suggestion has been offered that a member from one of the two governing bodies who is not currently mayor or chair be selected to run the meeting. The thought was that this would provide more of joint meeting feel versus two bodies meeting at the same time. I agree with that sentiment, I guess. I thought there was in one of these darn emails somewhere along the pipe. That he, he was thinking about a third party. Facilitator of meet, meeting, but.
Yeah, you know, I, I think the solution for this, obviously, long-term is to specify the chairmanship of these meetings. And, uh, you know, probably to allow the combined body to elect a leader. Um, you know, looking at Robert's rules, um, you know, I, I don't know how else under Robert's rules you, you would do it. And, you know, the closest thing to it is a convention, right? So where you, you, you've got delegates from a variety of places together, so if you follow the convention rules. Um, that, that seems the, you know, there are standing rules for conventions. So, but, but you have to authorize, um, in your bylaws or, um, you know, whatever, whatever your, your, your guiding. Uh, document is, you have to authorize, uh, periodic conventions, you know, define powers and duties, fix a quorum. Specify who votes, define qualifications, and explain how the convention should be organized and operated. So we have all of that, except explain how the convention should be organized and operated. We, we, we don't have a, you know, we, we just don't have a procedure for coming together as one body. And if we're gonna have joint jurisdiction, we have to have a procedure for coming together as one body.
But when you combine the boards like that and put one person in charge, then they become one board.
Exactly.
But the problem with that.
Board is joint jurisdiction.
But the problem with that is five commissioners can vote one way, and nine counselors vote the other, and we lose.
Yeah, but what you have to do is define voting rules, uh, that's, that's part of, you, you, you have to specify voting members. Who can vote and who can't, and it seems to me that when the two bodies get together, each body casts one equal vote. Right?
Correct.
So, uh, so, so, but we, 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 we would need to define that, right? I mean, it would make it a lot easier with joint jurisdiction if we did define that. So basically, the commission casts one vote and. And, 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 and the council casts one vote, and both votes have equal, equal power. But if we amend, I mean, if we amend joint jurisdiction to include that, and to include how the meetings will be organized and operated. You know, how does the agenda get put together for a joint meeting? Um, you know, we're kinda making it up as we go along, it would be nice to have it.
We have.
In format.
We have ten years of experience of putting joint meetings together.
Yeah.
Getting the meetings together and how they're run, trust me, don't even make the top one hundred list of what's wrong.
We're not winning yet, though. I feel like we are, we don't quite.
Winning what?
We don't quite have it down, um, and I, I think it'd be helpful to specify some of these things.
I think there's a lot bigger fish to fry than who's gonna run the meeting. There is some serious, serious flaws with what they've done. And that, that will come, I mean, it's already come out in a public meeting. City staff at the last, um, joint jurisdiction meeting that we had last Monday night. They publicly stated that they have put policy in place in joint jurisdiction without it going through the boards. I got, I got sidelined by the other board saying, well, that's probably a good policy. I was like, I'm not saying it's not, you know, I'm not arguing one way or another. I'm saying there's procedure that needs to be followed, if you're gonna change the rules in joint jurisdiction, and city staff doesn't have the power to do that. That's something that's going to be asked tomorrow night.
Well.
Many suggestion essentially is consensus rule, it's, it's, uh, you have two zeros, zero two, or one one. And only one of those allows, uh, I better sit up here before I get.
Get yelled at, no. But it could be that we could end up, uh, something that may work better would be, what, there are seven on the. Senate council, nine, so nine on there?
Eight ward, eight people from the wards and the mayor.
Those poor devils. So.
There's something that actually should be discussed with the group, not just us?
Yeah, yeah, but it'd be, e- essentially, in, you're right, you're right. But I wonder if a, uh, two-thirds vote for passage of anything would be, uh, a better, better look. Twelve, two-thirds, to be eight, so like.
The city can run whatever they want then.
Yeah, it's still, yeah, still asymmetrical. Well.
Two-thirds will not work out.
No.
Yeah, I think you still gotta go one and one, but that's getting away from what we're discussing, maybe discuss that tomorrow night.
Yes.
That's what we need to do is reply to John, what we're, what we're gonna do as far as this. And I don't hold the answer. And obviously, they don't either. I see in one of his emails, he did talk about it earlier. One of his early email does talk about it.
And we.
But he didn't have a solution either.
Yeah, we actually, uh, in previous, quote, joint meetings, unquote. They were not really joint meetings either, but they were, were, were consecutive meetings. They open, they open, uh, typically. Jose runs through the. The work that they're proposing, they act on it, then Travis opens our meeting. Drew runs through the, the administrative stuff, then we work on it, so it's really a, a concurrent. Not a concurrent even, it's sequentially, it's done sequentially. And that's not really a joint, that's not a joint decision, that's a, the, a sequential meeting, or sequential decision.
If you really wanna do, you could put one person, I don't care if it's Travis or the mayor, they could, they'd be the one that actually lets somebody talk. And you could have somebody from the other side actually be the timekeeper. That way, that way, if, if, for example, if, if it was Travis, or if it was the mayor, and it was on our side, we have to talk. And the person, I don't wanna call science, but, you know, but the somebody from commission say, okay, five minutes, it's up. You know, you could do it that way, so that way you wouldn't have this situation where somebody said, oh, I got shut off.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, the other, the other possibility would be to say. Yeah, I, I, I mean, the other, the other possibility would be to say, okay, we'll alternate meetings. Who, you know, the commission chair chairs versus the mayor chairs, and every other meeting, we go back and forth. Uh, you know, I mean, but the other alternative is using the New England town meeting format, which is that you get together as a, as a joint group, as a joint group. You don't have a chair. When you meet together, you don't have a chair because you're a, you're a convention, you're a joint group, and you elect a chair from the floor, from amongst those who are, you know, uh, uh, official delegates from, from the counselor, and, and I, I like that a lot better than the alternating thing, because the alternating thing seems awfully awkward.
There a problem with how it's been done?
Yeah, yeah, it's not working.
And I, I don't think how the meeting is run and who calls the meeting to order has ever been a problem.
Yeah, but it's, the problem is, a- as Dick pointed out, that we're having sequential meetings and we're not able to actually talk to each other. And what we want is a meeting where we can all talk to each other, where a member of the city council can say something and Mike can respond to it.
That happens at every joint meeting.
It's just much, it's much, much more awkward, and I, I think it would make a big difference if when we had joint meetings, we could w- we could all, all talk. We could ask each other questions, we could figure, yeah, it would make a huge difference.
That's actually how they happen right now. Both sides talk to each other. I, I've done this for ten years. I mean, since the inception, inception, I've been there. Nobody has ever stopped, no city council side, whether it's planning and zoning, or commission side, whether it's planning and zoning, has ever stopped the other one from talking.
We, zoning commissions always stopped.
Always, and so do the city council and the commissioners. I've never, I've never seen anybody stop the boards from talking to each other, and there's no time limit on the boards.
Yeah, and then, so then there shouldn't be a problem with changing, um, you know, the way joint jurisdiction meetings ha- happen, I mean, I.
I, I guess what I'm worried about is we're gonna focus on something that's not a problem and not address the problems.
Yeah.
I mean, because we're, we're, we're looking like we're creating a problem here.
I also think there might be a difference between being able to talk and agreeing with the other side. I think that's the bigger issue, not that Travis has more time to talk and Dick can't ever speak. It's, they don't, they don't agree with each other, so they don't want to hear the other one speak, is what, and I obviously have not been at the meeting, so if I'm wrong, certainly tell me that I'm wrong, but from what I heard, that's more of the issue than people having time. It's, nobody agrees.
Yeah.
And I would also point out that the five of you have spent how long trying to discuss whether you should have a moderator, and if you do, who's the moderator, and you haven't even talked about the nine other people that have opinions as well.
Yeah.
So the chances of this happening before this tomorrow's meeting slim to none.
Yeah.
And in the future, how do you, do you spend the, the first thirty minutes of the meeting, argue about, well, who's the moderator for this meeting? They did it last time, so now we want somebody new. I mean, these are all new issues that are gonna be coming up just by changing this one thing. It might seem small, but it's gonna spiral.
Yeah, I agree with you. We haven't come up to an answer yet.
No, and everyone's had good points for their sides, but that's kind of part of the discussion.
Yeah.
And then you have to have the city, if, what if they pick a person and you are always like, ah, I'm not doing that person, and again, back to square one. Or you pick a person and they say no. Again, same, same situation. And I also think, outside looking in, Travis and Kelsey being able to come together to run the meeting, to me, that seems like two groups coming together. The leader of two groups are joining their people together. I don't, I don't understand how that's not, oh, the appearance of a working relationship. I think needing a moderator between the two groups is very telling. That's what I think, so.
Gets along, is basically what.
Yes, that's, that's what it looks like to me.
Alright, so I, I think it's pretty clear that we're not gonna come to the consensus here, so, let's, uh.
You summed it up very well.
Hold these questions until tomorrow.
Yeah.
One of the possibilities for tomorrow night, you know, going forward, that I, I was thinking is that what we probably should have is a subcommittee that's made up of members of both planning commissions and both, both governing bodies, that, that then works through all these details, and it takes a lot of the emotion out of this if we do it that way, so that, uh, one, one of the things I would hope that, uh, I propose tomorrow night would be to do something like that. And then that takes out some of the asymmetry of the two different sizes of the bodies and that sort of thing, and, and, uh, and yet it brings everybody, you know, everyone, the two, the two entities, or even four entities, uh, will end up with an equal voice at the table. So. I think, I think you're, I, you know, I think that y- your comments have been helpful.
Okay, thank you. I know you didn't ask for my opinion, but I gave it. Once in a while, it's, it's worth it.
Yes, yes, an interjection is good.
Appreciate it.
So. Gonna tell John, let's, uh, let's, uh, go in with the same way we've run them in the past, with the hopes that that's one question that we can resolve fairly quickly next time, and, uh, I'm, I would propose a subcommittee is one solution to that.
Yeah, I, I like the subcommittee idea, so I, I just wanna make sure I understand how this would work, so Kelsey would open the council meeting, Travis would open the commission meeting, so both commit, meetings, so both groups would have meetings simultaneously instead of consecutively.
That works.
Yep.
I moved to a jerk.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Poplar.
Yes.
Thanks, Sam.
Thanks.
Thank you.